This is a call to order, the May 19th, 2021 mid-month meeting of the Duck Town Council. This time, I'd like to do a roll call of the council, the manager and the attorney. This is Don Kingston, Mayor.
Monica Thibodeau, Mayor Pro Tem.
Rob Mooney, Council.
Sandy Whitman, Council.
Nancy Cavaness, Council.
Robert Hobbs, Town Attorney.
Drew Havens, Town Manager.
In addition, we have Joe Hurd, Director of Community Development, Jeff Ackerman, Police Chief, Trey Baschetta, Deputy Fire Chief, and Donna, our Fire Chief, is also available, perhaps by phone if needed today, Laurie Ackerman, our Town Clerk, and Kristin Legner, our PIO. I'll remind those that are listening in that this is a month, mid-month meeting, there's no public comments, and no participation from the public, it's a working session between the council and the staff. So our first item, and I'd like to ask Joe Hurd if he would address a new declaration of state of emergency that I issued, and also a temporary accommodation for business before we get into item number one. Joe?
Has the mic on that one. So anyway, sorry about that. You may have seen in the, we had a couple things out there, social media and in the public over the last few days of some other communities that have been dealing with a very, very similar issue. What we've got is with the governor's most recent, you know, the adoption of the emergency orders with the governor, it has removed some of the occupancy restrictions that previously existed on businesses. This particularly affects restaurants when we're looking at the issue. And as you're aware, that almost exactly a year ago, we adopted some accommodations for our local businesses here in Duck due to the COVID-19 restrictions placed on them by the governor's orders at the time. With those being lifted, the way that our ordinance and our order creating those allowances was worded tied it to the governor's order. With that changing, we have a choice of either letting it expire and telling all those businesses they have to go back to business as usual, like it was pre-pandemic, or we could consider something, allowing that to continue for a period of time in light of the fact that we're really hitting our busiest season, we're having a lot of people who are going to be coming in from areas throughout the country, so there are still some concerns related to that. And we do have a number of businesses, business owners, as well as customers who are still looking at safety measures, that's an important part of their journey here to Duck and their experience here in town. So with all that in mind, had an opportunity to talk with Town Manager, Mr. Havens, as well as Mayor Kingston, and we have updated the provisions that were passed before. There was a, in the mayor's proclamation, that's the four-page document, there's some wording in there that speaks to the justification for the town continuing to allow, to offer those allowances to businesses. And then in the temporary accommodations, the two-page document that really specifies what businesses are allowed to do and not do under those accommodations. We've made a few changes, I just wanted to highlight those for you. The main part of it is in the justification at the very top, that opening paragraph explains why we're continuing these. It also sets a deadline of November 30th, 2021. This will allow our businesses to carry these through that high summer season, as well as our anticipated strong fall season through Thanksgiving. But we felt it was important, Town Attorney Hobbs had offered this, that it may important to have a deadline date because it allows the businesses to plan for that, know when they have to bring that in, and it's plenty of time for them to comfortably do that. The only other changes in there are just wording changes, whereas before it tied the limitations to the limits, the occupancy limits that the governor's rules stated, since those no longer exist, where the intent of this, again, from the get-go is not to allow businesses to expand, but to allow them to continue to do what they would have been able to do previously. So the wording has been changed to allow them to do up to the occupancy limits that they have, that are either, you know, usually those are put on by health department in terms of the number of seating. In some instances, we even have town restrictions, if it went through a conditional use permit, they're limited to a certain number of seats. So those are the changes that were made in here. Mayor Kingston has signed these, but we wanted you to have those and be aware of those. We've already talked with Christian about, you know, getting that word out in the community so everyone is aware of the steps that the council's taken in support of your business community here in Duck. I'd be glad to answer any questions any of the members might have.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Joe. Moving on to item number one, discussion consideration of planning board appointment, the reappointment of Joe Blakitis as chairman of the planning board, and I'm going to turn it over to Joe at this point in time.
All right. Well, I think you all know the candidate very well. So Joe Blakitis, I'll just say, has expressed an interest in serving an additional term as a planning board member. As you're aware, the board itself elects the chair. Just a few months ago, the board members re-elected him as chair of the board, so we would ask for your consideration in reappointing Mr. Blakitis to serve another term on the planning board.
Are there any questions or discussion?
How long has Mr. Blakitis been on the planning board?
Laurie Ackerman, do you have any idea?
Gosh.
It's...
Seven years? He's been a member since he was chairman. When Mr. Ross Malata was the chairman, when he stepped down, they elected Joe.
So he's probably been on three terms.
As chairman.
And as chairman, it's been about six, I think, because he was chairman when I came, so he's been chair for at least seven years now.
I think he became chair when John Britt was appointed to council, 2012.
Yeah. And he was on it before then. Was that your question, how long has he been on the planning board or the chair?
That was my, both. Both questions. Additionally, why is it that when we have somebody's term ending like that, we don't open this up for applications?
Did we open it up for applications?
Well, generally in the past, what we do is ask existing members if they're interested in reserving, and that's the consideration we give. Usually when there's an opening, from a standpoint of someone does not want to get reappointed to the planning board, that's when we open it up for other candidates. That's been the pattern in the past.
Just because that's what we've always done doesn't mean that that's the best approach to things. I mean, it seems to me that somebody that's been in a position for X number of years, especially Joe's been in that position for, or at least part of that board for probably more than 10 years, I don't understand why we don't open that up and ask other members of the community who have interest in this to apply for it, and then do our best to pick the most qualified person.
Don't we, we do have open applications, though, where we have folks that are interested in, hey, if this comes up, I'd be interested to serve this, this, and this. So those are, that's always available on the website. I don't know if there was anybody listed in those applications, or if we had anybody queued up in there, because I don't see those, but we do solicit volunteerism and say, you know, have them fill out the application and say what boards they'd be interested in.
Right. Well, we do, and there are some people that have submitted applications for the planning board, but if we're just going to keep reappointing the same people, that does not afford the opportunity for these people that have applied for it. And I think that that's, you know, people get complacent when they're in the same position for a long time, and sometimes change is good.
Well, I think the action the council can take today is to delay appointment to the planning board and open it up for additional applications, and we can deal with this at the first meeting in June. It's up to council how you want to deal with that. Will Mr. Blakitis still be able to chair if he is not reappointed now?
The council meeting will be held prior to the next planning board meeting, so your meeting would be scheduled for June 2nd. The board is not scheduled to meet again until June 9th, so should you make a decision at that meeting, it becomes a moot point. Otherwise, I'd have to read, I'd have to go back and read a little closer to determine his status as far as moving forward if the council does not make a decision at that June meeting.
Is it feasible to see who has applied again? I know we've seen those before, anybody that's kind of got applications out there, and then put out a call for anybody who wants to apply between now and our next regular general meeting in June?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the approach ought to be looking for new applications. If people have applied before, they can reapply, but I mean, some of those people may no longer be interested.
That's true, they can get...
What we typically do is check with them to see if they were still, in other words, if we have an application in the file, we would contact that person, say, you know, look, two years ago, you submitted this, we just wanted to check and be sure, you know, do you want it, do you still want to be considered for that? So we can certainly take that step.
Yeah, and then we could get them before the meeting so we'd have a chance to look at them.
So I think we, Robert, we probably need a motion to solicit applications and delay the decision until July 2nd?
June.
June 2nd, I mean.
That should be fine.
Yeah, so I'll undertake a motion to...
So moved.
Got a statement motion?
Make a motion to table this until our June 2nd meeting and solicit applications for the planning board.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just want clarification that the solicitation of applications for people that want to be involved is an ongoing, it's an open, ongoing process, correct?
Correct.
That's right.
And it has been for years, so.
Yeah.
So what we're saying now is that anybody that's on any of the boards, the nominations are going to be open for anyone, for any board from now on. Is that correct?
Well, I think they've always been, right?
But we were always asking them if they wanted to reserve for the next two or three year term. So are we doing this across the board, then?
I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I don't see a problem with that.
No.
I mean, I think in addition to asking Joe, you know, which, don't get me wrong, this is no reflection on Joe himself, I mean, I think he's...
No, I'm not knocking Joe, I'm just saying.
No, and that's what I'm just making clear, but, and then we ask the, we ask the people who are, whose term is expiring if they're interested, and then we also take a look at the pool and see. Does that, do you see an issue with that?
You know, you're going to go right back, the vice chair has been there almost nine years also.
Right.
So the next, when his ninth, year is up, we're going to go back through it again, where we could lose a vice chair again, we could possibly lose the chairman of the planning board, we could possibly lose a vice chair.
If their, if their terms have expired and they apply again, just like somebody that's not a member of the board at that point...
What I'm saying, Robert, used to be that...
Let me finish, please, Sandy. If they apply again, and we determine that that's the best candidate, then that's not a problem. But if we determine that somebody else is a better candidate and their term has expired, then we are only benefiting ourselves and the town.
We could have a turnover every three years in these boards, and...
Yes, we could.
Where there's no consistency at all.
And what is the consistency with, why would that be a problem?
Well, you could end up with possibly, if I'm not mistaken, you point two, two, and one, is that correct, Joe?
That's correct.
We could lose two board members and two new ones go on.
And?
I'm just pointing that out.
Similar to you and I being, sitting here right now.
That's right. Every two, every two years, we can lose all five of us.
That's right.
Which is unusual.
The council should be that way either, but that's another subject.
We're not addressing that problem at the moment. We're only talking about...
Well, it's not a problem, it's defined by state statutes, but...
It's how we set it up so that we would get, we can certainly discuss that rationale and that any other time, but this is about the board.
I'm just, well, certainly any appointment, you know, should be open for all to apply, and then the council will make the decision on who they want as a candidate to fill the job, and it's probably...
Your appointment procedure in your town code says that the presiding officer opens the floor to nominations where the members can then put forward and debate the names of possible appointees. So there can either be one or more persons that could be nominated for any opening.
So the motion on the floor basically states that we're going to open up for applications and will make, be presented to us at the June 2nd meeting, and the council will decide on the appointment to the planning board. So any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, let's do a roll call vote. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tem Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Booney?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Aye.
The motion passes five to Joe. Thank you, Joe. And I guess you'll handle the logistics of advertising and...
Yes, sir, we'll get the notice out.
Recontaining those that require interest. Thank you. Going to go on to item number two, presentation by Becky Vizi of the MAPS Group on the town of Duck's personnel policies and position classification. Shelly, starting with that, I'd like to turn over to Drew to make the introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the culmination of something you all started in November. You contracted with the MAPS Group to do a pay and classification study and to rework our personnel policy. So Becky is going to make a presentation to you of both of those today. Not expecting any action from the council today. So in, as you know, in the budget document that you have, the pay and class study, the output of that is included in the budget already. The personnel policies do have some budget impact that some of those are factored into the current budget, but what we're expecting you to do is be able to ask Becky questions today about her presentation. She's going to give you a notebook, some more homework to do, sorry about that. But then we'll need to have a mid-month meeting in June to come back and hash out the personnel policies and move towards getting them adopted July 1 as well. But the budget, the budget doesn't need to hang up because of the personnel policies, and the personnel policies don't have to hang up because of the budget, they can be two separate issues, and they are. So Becky's here to make the presentation to you, and I'll let you know that I was really thrilled to see that you had contracted with Becky to do this work. Very familiar with her. She has done some really good work for the town of Apex when I was serving there as assistant manager and manager, and really a big, big fan of Becky and her work, and I think you can see by the brochure that she has, she's done a lot of this. So, you know, I don't use the word expert very often, but she's an expert in this stuff. She really knows what she's doing, now that I've really set her up. Becky, if you would...
Thank you, Drew. What he's saying is I'm old. I've been doing this a long time. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. I'm really pleased to be here. What I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about me and the MAPS Group, walk you through some information about the process and a little bit about the methodology, give you a little bit of context on compensation, illustrate that context a little bit on the flip chart, pass out the binders, walk you through what's there. As we go along, answer any questions you have, very informally, and then leave it with you, and if you have questions and want me to come back, I'm happy to do that. So let me start by telling you a little bit about me and the MAPS Group. Whenever I tell folks about myself, I start by saying I'm a Tar Heel, which means born in North Carolina, educated in Chapel Hill, I'm one of those true blue folks, so you can give me some grief if you want to do, I get that every now and then. I have both an undergraduate and a master's in public administration from Carolina. When I left there, I went to work with the city of Greensboro and their HR department as an intern, went back to Chapel Hill, worked for the town of Chapel Hill for three years, and then went to Cary, and this is where I really do tell my age, I was Cary's first ever HR director. Went there in 1981, when the town had a population of 26,175 employees. I was there for seven years, and during that time, we went from 26,000 to 45,000 population, from 175 to 400 employees. Left Cary to be the HR director in Durham County, and then 32 years ago, came to work with MAPS. So for the last 32 years, I have been traveling the state, working with local governments all over North Carolina on a variety of things. The first two you see on the PowerPoint is what we are doing with you, classification and pay studies and personnel policies. We also do facilitate retreats, we do a lot of supervisory training and management training, including for the School of Government, team building, we help organizations design and implement performance evaluation, performance pay systems, help with hiring processes, assistant managers, police chiefs, fire chiefs, HR directors, finance directors. Our newest service is employee engagement or comment surveys, kind of the satisfaction survey approach. So that's a little bit about our services. I think last time I counted, I personally have worked with over 200 local governments in North Carolina, drive somewhere between, before the pandemic, somewhere between 20 and 30,000 miles a year around the state, and those are just some of the places that we've worked. So I want to start by talking about why does the town need to have a classification and pay plan, and why does that plan need to be periodically updated? Now, when we talk about classification and pay, we're talking about two sides of the coin, the classification side of the coin, the pay side of the coin. The classification side is looking at what are the duties in a job? How do those duties compare to duties in other jobs? Are they very similar? Are they similar enough to have the same title? Are they different? And if they're different, then ranking those jobs in terms of which require more education, more experience, more knowledge, more skill, more responsibility, which require less. What's an appropriate title for the job? In studies like this, sometimes we do recommend a different title. Sometimes, because the duties have changed so much, the current title's not really accurate. Sometimes, titles get old-fashioned, and we recommend something more modern. Sometimes, there's just a better title, and we want to recommend that to you. And then finally, on the classification side of the coin, capturing the essence of each job and something we call a classification, what people often refer to as a job description. So that's the classification side. The pay side then says, given a set of duties in a job, what's an appropriate salary range for that job from start to max, based on what other places in the market are paying for the same kind of work? Pause, questions on that?
I guess I'd ask, on the competitive salary ranges that you're discussing for other, are you looking locally and not just across the state?
What we have recommended, and I think we actually sent y'all a letter that showed who we recommended surveying. Coastal communities have some uniqueness in terms of, number one, their, the number of people you serve is much greater than your population, so typically your staffing levels don't reflect your permanent population. And then, secondly, cost of living in coastal communities tends to be higher. So what I've found over the years is that it's best to try to stick with as much as possible coastal communities. In your case, we primarily stayed within Dare County, as local as possible. And I'll tell you the truth, I can't remember, I think we went to Carruck, but I don't think we went very far beyond that, because that reflects both the cost of living in the area and your core market, and your core market are the people you compete with most intensely.
Yeah.
And I will tell you that of all the coastal communities in North Carolina, this is the highest cost area. We do find, I did my first study with Kill Devil Hills in 1991, and the first thing I heard when I got there from employees is, now how are you going to show our cost of living here? Because it's a lot greater. And what I've heard since then, working with places in Dare and in Carruck County, but more Dare, is that we have a bigger challenge because there's a swamp between us and where there's lower-cost housing and greater numbers of employees. And so we have to compensate for that to get quality people. That's probably a long-winded answer.
No, that's great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions before I move on? Why have a classification and pay plan and keep it up to date? And you see five reasons there. The first one is to be able to recruit and retain employees, and I want to break those two out on the two sides of the coin. When we talk about recruit on the classification side of the coin, what we're looking at is having that class specification or job description accurate and a helpful tool to the person who's hiring. Did I do that? Studies show there can be as much as a 40% difference in the productivity of employees based on how good a hiring decisions organizations make. So that updated classification should have on it, the education, experience, knowledge, skills, abilities, and certifications needed to do the job. So it helps the person who's doing the hiring think about what needs to go in that job ad, what kind of criteria should we use to screen applications, what kind of interview questions do we need to ask, so we get a good match between the job that needs to be done, the person who's being hired to do that job. Recruit on the pay side is looking at when there's a vacant position, making sure the starting salary for the job is competitive enough that you're not having to advertise, and advertise, and scrape the bottom of the barrel, and take someone less than satisfactory. Retain on the classification side, because when I was in Chapel Hill, Cary, Durham County, one of my jobs was to do exit interviews, to talk to people who were leaving. So I know one of the reasons people leave is because they don't feel like they're getting credit for the level of responsibility or the level of difficulty in their job. And then retain on the pay side of the coin is looking not just at that starting salary, but the whole salary range. Is it competitive? Is it being used in a competitive fashion? Internal equity is looking within the organization structure, again, making sure jobs are ranked appropriately, and also looking across departments. You would not want, for example, to have a situation where you have an administrative assistant in Department A, and administrative assistant in Department B, the one in Department A has more difficult job responsibilities, but the one in Department B's in a higher pay range. So creating that internal equity laterally and horizontally and vertically. And then hopefully that leads to equal pay for equal work, which is a legal piece of this, and also our underlying principle, what we're trying to do and the recommendations we make to you is help you create equal pay for equal work. Maximize cost effectiveness, I think the best way to talk about this is to tell you about a study we did 29 years ago. I started doing this 32, so this was early in my consulting career. We had one of the cities near Charlotte ask us to do their first ever pay study. They had 175 employees, and we were really surprised they did not have a classification and pay plan. We discovered they'd had a long-term manager who'd been there over 30 years, and he didn't want anybody to tell him what he could or couldn't pay, so they didn't have any salary ranges. He would bring folks in, negotiate, set their pay, and they would periodically get raises. He retired, and the manager came in and asked us to create their pay plan. When we did that study 29 years ago, we found a custodian that was making $45,000 a year. Now, $45,000 a year 29 years ago is like $75,000 a year now. We found an administrative assistant making $52,000, which is more like 82 now, and then we found a bunch of underpaid folks. So what was happening in that city is they were using their resources to overpay some folks, underpay a fair number of folks. And of course, everybody's got limited resources. So the whole idea behind having a plan, having it accurate and up to date, is having a structure that helps management and elected officials make good decisions about where resources need to go, so you can hire, keep good people, and be fair. And then finally, defensible system, two parts to that. One is defensible in the legal sense, and there are a number of laws we pay attention to as we do this. Americans with Disabilities Act, OSHA's Bloodborne Pathogen Standards, Fair Labor Standards Act, just to name a few. The other part of defensible is that what you're getting from us is based on professional methodology. methodology. We haven't been listening to anyone saying, you know, give so-and-so a raise, don't give so-and-so a raise. You're getting our professional recommendations. Questions on that one? Oops, I went the wrong way. Sorry about that. Oh, no, I didn't. Okay. So there are two things that are going on that create the need for studies. One is that over the course of time, the duties and jobs change. And it won't change in every job, but it will in some. And it can be for any number of reasons. It can be because of reorganizations, shifting around who does what, who reports to whom. It can be because the town adds or deletes services, that adds or deletes responsibilities. Growth can mean that you've got to add people and organize differently. Regulations can change the kinds of certifications people have to have. Technology can change the kind of skills that are required in a job. So for any number of reasons, what somebody used to do and what's being done in that job now can be different enough that the job is no longer properly classified, and that's the first place we start. The other part, market pay, everybody knows pay changes over time. And most organizations do what we typically call a cost of living adjustment, which usually means kind of following the average of inflation and moving pay up over time. And that's a good thing, but there's a flaw in that. The flaw is that while you're moving pay up on the average of inflation, in reality, some jobs are going up faster in the market than that average, some are going up slower than that average. So what we do in the study is we go to the market at a given point in time, identify the actual going rate of pay for specific jobs, assign those to the pay plan, then you go another, typically three to five years, adjust on the average of inflation, come back, do another fine tuning adjustments to that, those pay grade assignments based on market changes. Questions about any of that?
Becky, can you give us an example of that in the government municipal setting where the market has really made a big change?
Yes, I can give you several, but probably law enforcement's a really good example. You know, it used, in the 80s and 90s, law enforcement salaries were pretty much just following the average of inflation. And just as a point of comparison, you know, law enforcement requires a high school degree. A teacher requires a bachelor's degree. Law enforcement was lower than starting salaries for teachers. They're now higher. And law enforcement salaries have been going up for probably the last 15 years, much higher than the rate of inflation. Fire actually is another example, partly because those jobs have become more technical, because you've got hazardous materials response, more fire departments now are EMS. So fire is another example of jobs that have been going up faster than the average of So I want to walk you through the steps we did, we followed in doing the study. Of course, you identified the need for the study. Typically, we do an onsite employee orientation. This time we, thanks to Christian Tate, so employees could watch it. And because what we, I have firmly discovered is that when employees understand what we're doing, when there's more transparency, there's more trust, and both in, you know, what we're doing and the outcomes. Every employee completed a questionnaire with their current job duties. We asked them to tell us in their own words what they do. That questionnaire then goes through the chain of command for review and sign off. We review it and then we scheduled an interview with at least one employee in every different set of duties. So for example, we didn't, you know, interview every patrol officer doing the same thing, but at least one with every different set of duties. The purpose of the interviews being to make sure we understand job duties accurately so we can accurately classify the jobs. Excuse me. Could you grab me some water? There's, I've got some right here. Sorry about that. Once we reviewed the questionnaires and completed the interviews, we put everything together in a report with salary data, recommendations, personnel policy, benefits recommendations, sent it to management and said, give us some feedback. Have we misunderstood, misinterpreted anything? We made very few tweaks, actually, mostly just updated because of turnover and things like that between November and now. And we are at the last step, which is presenting it to you. So questions on the process? So I want to talk just a little bit about, whoops, definitely got ahead of myself. I'm missing something here. So let me just tell you a little bit about, when we talk about the methodology, we want to talk about the difference between a position and a classification. So there might be, just to use an example from the police department, there might be eight positions in the classification of police officer. There's only one position in the classification of police chief. So you can have multi-position classifications, you can have single-position classifications. The only time we put multiple positions in, we only put multiple positions in one classification is when all of those jobs are similar enough that any one applicant with a given set of knowledge, skills, and abilities can do any of the jobs. If a, one position is performing significantly different, or significantly more responsible or less responsible duties, it goes in a different classification. The class specification, as I said earlier, is similar to a job description. The difference is a job description describes a single position. The class specification's a little bit broader, a little bit more formalized, covers all the positions in the classification. And one of the ways of thinking about that class specification is if, for example, if the town were going to purchase a backhoe, somebody would put together a list of specifications for that backhoe. You know, how deep does it have to be able to dig? How big a bucket do you need? Do you need a front end loader on it? Does it need rubber tire, track tire, whatever? You would put those specs out, you would take bids and compare and pick the best price to get what you need. The class specification is what you need in a job, has the duties, responsibilities, education, experience, knowledge, skills, abilities, and certifications. And once you have a vacant position, you take applications and compare them back to here's what we need, what's the best match. One of the most important things to remember in a classification and pay study is that what we're studying is jobs, not people. The classification plan is a position classification plan. And that means that once we create it based on the jobs that need to be done by the town, not reflecting who happened to be doing those jobs at the time of the study, we can classify a vacant position and will. You know, if there's one being requested in the budget and somebody tells us, here are the duties and responsibilities we need, we can classify that job. So what that also means is classification is not looking at things like performance of an employee, because that's the person, and you want the job classified. You know, I've dealt with some situations where I've had, you know, especially really small towns, board members or management say, well, we want to keep this job low because the person's not a good employee. But what that means is should that person leave, you don't have the salary range you need to hire somebody who is competent. So the classification should reflect what the job requires, not what the person performs or what their qualifications are, or how long they've been with you. All of that is the person we are classifying based on. Here's the job, here's what it takes to do this job, and here's a salary range that will allow you to hire somebody who can be competent in that job. So let me pause there.
Becky, the classification, is it, the classification is what it is regardless of whether it's full-time, part-time, seasonal, contractual? So if somebody's in administrative assistant position and it's part-time, it's still the same classification?
If the duties are the same.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? So now I do want to turn back to this slide and to the pay side of the coin and talk about how what we're recommending to you fits into the context of an overall compensation system. And you see four components here. These are the four major components that are needed in a compensation system. You can sort of think about it like a four-legged table. When one of the components is out of whack, it kind of pulls everything else out of balance. Each one of these has a separate purpose, and I want to just walk you through those. The first one is the major focus of this study. And you can almost think about, as we update the classification and pay plan, that being the bones or infrastructure of the HR system. Having that, if that's not accurate, you know, nothing else hangs correctly in that And when we find in a study like this, jobs that are undervalued or underclassified, we do recommend adjustments. People call them raises, we call them catch-ups, because what you're doing is catching people up to where they need to be, where they should have been already. Questions on that one? The second of the four is typically called a cost of living adjustment. And market, compensation professionals call it a market adjustment. Because what you're doing is you're moving your whole pay range, your whole pay table up over time, moving that hiring rate so it's staying competitive, moving the max, so that in between studies, you're not getting too far behind. If you did not do cost of living adjustments, and your competitors do, then what happens is over time, their starting salaries are moving up, yours are staying the same, it could get to the point you could only hire people nobody else wants, which obviously is not where you want to be. The other part of this is hopefully keeping down the cost of turnover. Turnover is very expensive. According to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, when an employee leaves a job, the cost to the organization's somewhere between 2/3rds and 125% of that employee's annual salary. And police and fire, for example, are two of those categories that are in that 100 to 125% range in terms of cost of turnover. Questions on that one? The third of the four components is once you have salary ranges established, there needs to be some method of moving employees across that range. There's no one right or wrong way to do that. Every organization gets to choose its method. I know one county that says this year, half the employees moved 2.5% into their range, next year the other half moved. But the vast majority of local governments base that on performance. They say if we've got two employees, one's doing a better job, we want the one doing the better job to be getting larger increases, making more money. And there's been a pretty strong trend around the state to kind of shift resources out of automatic, more into pay for performance. And we used to, we would see, you know, for example, organizations that would do mostly just cost of living. We're seeing much more now, employers putting that into performance pay. And the other part of the trend is having employees involved and establishing job-related performance standards and goals that serves the basis for that performance evaluation, and having supervisors trained to conduct effective performance evaluation conferences. So both the employee and the supervisor leave that meeting saying, this was time well spent. We talked about important things. And the focus of the whole program being not on judging performance, but improving performance. How can we get better? Questions on that one? The final one is longevity pay. Longevity pay says, thank you for your seniority, for your loyalty. We appreciate it. Some organizations can combine longevity with other things. A lot of local governments make it sort of double as a Christmas bonus. So they will do something somewhere between late Thanksgiving to early December and make that based on longevity, because in North Carolina, holiday bonuses are actually not allowed for local governments. So longevity is, and that makes a good way to do those holiday bonuses. We used to see longevity in percentages, and I think it's because that's the way the state of North Carolina has done it. But the trend has been to put that into flat dollar amounts, so it doesn't change a lot over time, and it's less expensive, allows more of the resources to go to performance, Patty. Questions on that one?
So just so I'm clear on that, the, what you're saying that's permissible for organizations and local governments to give an addition to merit pay or cost of living, also an additional recognition and pay for longevity? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I want to just quickly illustrate all of this on the flip chart. And just to kind of show a little bit more about what you're going to be getting as well. So the way the pay table is intended to work is that you have pay grades that go down the page like this. And what we're recommending to you in the range is, get that out of the way, a hiring rate, a minimum, a midpoint, and a max. Now, the way this is intended to work is that the gray going down the page is intended to represent the job. And again, I'm just going to use the police department because their rank structure, I think, just makes it easy to follow. So we'll say hypothetically, grade 11's a police officer, grade 13's a sergeant, grade 16's a lieutenant. And I'm just going to stick some round numbers up here for illustration, don't read anything into these. So we'll just say hypothetically, this goes from 40,000 to 60,000. We'll say this goes from 45,000 to 70,000. So when we say the grade represents the job, what that means is if grade 11's a grade for police officer, all police officers are somewhere in that grade. Grade 13's a grade for sergeant, all sergeants are somewhere in that grade. If I'm a police officer and I get to the top of my grade, I can't just go down to the next grade. That represents the maximum value in the market for that job. That's what keeps you from having that, you know, $52,000 or $82,000 administrative assistant 29 years ago. So the only way my grade changes is if my job changes. So if I'm a police officer and I get promoted to sergeant, I get a grade for sergeant. If I'm a sergeant and mess up and get demoted to police officer, I go back to the grade for police officer. A study like this could say, well, really, based on the market, police officers should be in grade 12, sergeants should be in grade 14. If you approve that, then all the police officers would move, all the sergeants would move. The grade and the job stay together. The range then going this way is where the person comes in. So you've got job this way, person this way. So let's say hypothetically, the chief is hiring two new police officers today. And let's say hypothetically, one of them is coming straight out of basic law enforcement training with no previous experience. The other one is coming from southern shores and has been a police officer for two years. Now, they're both going to be police officers, so they're going in the same grade, but you have a difference in the qualifications of the two people. So the way this is intended to work is that you would start the one with no previous experience here, the one with previous experience there. Then, once they're onboard, going to the third of those components, range movement, there needs to be some method for them to move across the range. If that method's performance, then what happens is that periodically, each employee is considered as to whether or how much of an increase he or she has earned. Now, there is a seniority component to performance pay, because the longer an employee's here, the more opportunities they have to earn an increase and move across the range. The performance component is, the better job somebody's doing, the larger and/or more frequent the increases and the faster they move across the range. So that the kind of distribution you hope to see is you hope to see high-performance, long-term employees, been here a long time, doing a really good job in the top parts of the pay plan. You hope to see middle-term high performers and long-term middle performers. You hope to see middle-term high performers and long-term middle performers in the middle parts of the pay plan. And you hope to see brand-new folks and some longer-term folks who are doing enough to keep their job, not a whole lot more, in the beginning parts of the pay plan. Let me pause. Am I making sense for everybody? When there's a market adjustment, let's say hypothetically you do a 2% market adjustment, everything on the whole table changes by that amount. So this would change by 2%, this would change by 2%, and all of these, everything changes by whatever that amount is. Now, what y'all ask us to do primarily in this study is this part right here. What is the proper classification for each job, and what is a competitive salary range for that job? So we created a new pay table based on that, you know, that data and pulling everything together. Once we create this new table, then we've got to get all employees on to that new table. Every employee's got to go on here somewhere, in the proper classification and in the grade that goes with their classification. And we've created three implementation strategies for you for how to do that with the cost. And for each of those strategies, we also did something we call a distribution analysis. And what that means is we take all the employees and all the jobs and all the grades, we collapse them together, and we do bar charts. How many employees are at the very beginning of their range bar? How many are 5% in bar? How many are 10% in bar? And so on. And if you draw a line across the top of those bars, what you hope to see is something that looks sort of like a bell-shaped curve. The ideal distribution of employees across the range is to have approximately 2/3 of all employees in the middle 1/3 of the range. Unfortunately, sometimes when we do this, instead of that bell-shaped curve, we see something that looks like a ski slip. And that is called compression. And what that means is that most employees are in the very beginning parts of the pay range. And if an organization has compression, there are two problems associated with it. The first one is a hiring problem, because let's say you have a really well-qualified candidate you want to hire. To get them, you've got to pay right here, but you're onboard equally qualified folks are back here. That's a problem. The second problem with compression is morale issue, because instead of having long-term high performers over here and brand-new folks here, they're very close together. And that really does cause a lot of dissatisfaction when you've got like a one-year person and a five-year person and a 10-year person very close together. And unfortunately, that can create that expensive turnover.
Would that be an indication of a lot of turnover if you had a lot of people on the entry-level side? Because you're, just no one's ever moving the other way.
Absolutely. And in my field, we consider law enforcement kind of canaries in the mineshaft, because often what happens is they are going, you know, to court to testify, and they're sitting there and waiting. And they're talking to the guys, you know, and the gals from other law enforcement agencies. And it's like, you know, "Well, how long have you been where you are? Well, how long have you been there? Well, what did you make when you first started? Well, what do you make now?" You know? And so what happens is if, you know, we've got one person who's here, and one's here, and one's here, and one's here, and one's here, everybody wants to go work here. So when we talk about competitiveness, it's two-dimensional. It's competitive at the hiring rate, so you can hire new people, but it's also competitive in actual salary, so you can retain folks.
One question I had was regarding the fringe benefits. And I guess, does your study just assume that all state employees have the same fringe benefits?
No, we actually did a benefit survey that you are about to receive. In fact, you want to go ahead and pass them around. So you get, with the local governments here. Now, the retirement is the same. Pretty much everybody's in the local government retirement system. But there are some differences on some of the others. Things like life insurance, vacation accrual, number of holidays, that you'll see. So we're providing that for you.
So that, that's considered part of the whole compensation? Or do these numbers sort of just talk salary? And then you separate the fringes?
We separate them. They're, back in the 90s, there was this big trend called total compensation, and you're supposed to pull them together. But what we have found is that, you know, on the hiring end, people aren't looking, especially young folks, are not looking at benefits. They're looking at that dollar. And you get longer into, you know, folks being around there for a while, they start paying attention to benefits. So you can't really load one and ignore the other. You really do have to kind of do a balance. And that's what we've been recommending.
Thank you.
In your recommendations here, have you figured out the solution to somebody that's, say, grade 11 and has gone all the way across the range to the, to the top of their, that range, who now is going to get promoted? Would they, they don't go down to a lower salary?
No, they don't. In fact, what we recommended in the personnel policy is that any time somebody is promoted, and a promotion is defined as going from a job in a lower pay grade to a job in a higher pay grade, that comes with a minimum of a 5% increase. Or if they are pretty low in the lower pay grade, at least to the minimum of the new pay range. And that's fairly standard. That's fairly standard. Richard, I need one too. Thank you.
Becky, I have a question about, I'm not quite sure how to ask this, but the typical length that somebody will work in a job, I would suspect that people can't perform as many years as a suppression firefighter or as a police officer as they could in a, you know, position, you know, a planner, right? Just because of the physical demands, or quite frankly, the emotional toll that it would take. So the range, as you're trying to map out how people move across, is that factored in that a police officer isn't going to probably work as long as somebody in another kind of job, or?
Not in performance pay systems.
Okay.
Because in a performance pay system, for example, what a lot of organizations do is they say, "We will move you, we will move employees to midpoint based on standard performance. You do your job, we will move you to midpoint." But to go past mid, and that's considered sort of average market pay. But to go past midpoint, we expect above, above-average performance. And so there's not the expectation in a performance pay system that every employee's going to get to the max.
Okay.
There is an expectation they get to midpoint. And of course, midpoint changes every time you do a cost of living. And so it's not like, you know, they're stuck. But there's not really the expectation in if you have a performance pay philosophy that they're going to get to the max.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. Do you mind if I proper here?
Yeah, fine.
So what I want to do is just kind of walk you through what's here, answer questions as we go along. Of course, there's a cover letter, a title page, table of contents, and then there's an organization chart. And that organization chart reflects, as we understand it, current organization structure and recommended titles. And then past that is a page on methodology, which we've already talked about. And then if you go behind that first tab, pages five through 10 is department-by-department, kind of a paragraph basically on every classification. Quick summary of duties, what kinds of qualifications are required for the job, if we saw the job as strong or weaker in the market, if we recommended a title change, just kind of a quick summary of that. Then if you go on over to page 12, and tell me if I'm going too fast. So page 12 at the top is the places that we did survey, and I had forgotten, we did go into Virginia, just because that is a sort of a competitor for y'all too, both Chesapeake and Virginia Beach. And we did Bald Head just because they're kind of similar to y'all too, but everything else is in, you know, the local area. And what you see on those percentages, 50%, 65, 55, and so on, what that's reflecting is the difference between the starting salary and the maximum salary. So if you have a range that goes from 40 to 60, 60 minus 40 is 20,000, 20 is half of 40, that's a 50% range.
Interesting.
And so currently, your ranges were really higher than, you know, the market. We did recommend a 55% range closer to that. And of course, y'all can choose, you know, what I am recommending to you is meeting the market. Now, an organization can choose to lead the market. That's a choice you can make. You could choose to lag behind the market. But that's, that's what, you know, unless I get different direction from you, I am recommending meeting the market. And then if you come on over to the implementation strategies, what I want to do is illustrate those three. So what option one, which starts at the bottom of page 12, does, and you can see the cost there at the top of page 13, that takes an employee, so the minimum is where we recommend, that's where, somebody comes in at the hiring rate, and once they pass probation, they go to the minimum, is 5% higher. And that kind of gets them out of that hiring rate, so you don't have a, somebody's sitting there for eight or 10 or 12 months, and a new person comes in making the same thing. So we place everybody at minimum plus 1.5% per year. And in option one, it's per year in their current job. So for example, if you've got a police officer who's been with you 10 years and has been sergeant for five, then it's only putting them in the sergeant range with that five years. So it'd be five times 1.5%. That's what option one does. Option two does that same thing based on hire date. So in option two, if that sergeant's been with you 10 years, they go to the range for sergeant, and they go 10 times 1.5% or 15% into the range. Now, we did option three because you want to give some credit to an employee for previous service, once they've been promoted. But a sergeant who's been with you five, who's been a sergeant five years, probably shouldn't be 15% into the sergeant range. And so what we did in option three is we split the two. So we give them half credit for how long they've been a sergeant, 2.5 years, half credit for how long they've been, you know, with you, and take that and multiply it times the 1.5%. So it basically splits the difference and gives them some credit for both. Have I said that clearly? Do you have questions about that?
Multiply, you multiply, on option three, you multiply it by 1.5%, but on option two, you do it at 1.2%? Or did I miss that?
Now, all three are 1.5%.
All 1.5%. Okay, I must have missed something.
The 1.2% is a percentage of all of payroll. So if we said that a cost of living is 2% of payroll, this is saying that cost is 1.2%.
Got it. Thank you. I thought I heard 1.2 in there somewhere.
So you can see the cost for option three is in between the cost for options one and two, which basically is splitting the difference between those two. And what this shows is that on the whole, y'all have done a good job. We have done studies, we've done studies where organizations were 18% below market, and that's a steep hole to climb out of. We've done them, you know, seven, eight, 10, I mean, so y'all have, on the whole, done a good job. And, you know, again, one of your choices is if you want to lead the market, and that's entirely up to you. There's some notes here on the, on the bottom of page 13. Number one says, "The recommended salary ranges are based on market data as of January. Effective this July 1st," these, many of these same places we surveyed are probably going to do a cola. And so if you don't, you'll immediately be behind. So that's one thing to think about. The second is that these costs that we're recommending to you are not intended to replace anything else you're doing. This is just a one-time thing, basically. The third one is that these costs are salary-only, it does not reflect the cost of benefits. The fourth note says that if you have employees who are in the disciplinary process to the point where they really aren't earning their current paycheck, you can allow the manager to delay an increase or catch up for that person. And we also recommend, what we don't know in doing these studies is if you, what's, again, just say you've got a police officer who had five years somewhere before they came here, we don't know that. So we could not be moving them in the range as much as they really should be. And so we recommend the manager have some flexibility to tweak that if needed for internal equity reasons. The only thing we can go on is date of promotion or date of hire. We don't have previous service information. So the manager should be able to tweak that if that needs to be tweaked.
Question? I'm going back to those options, those are, it says annual cost to implement, but yet, you know, your note says that this is a one-time catch-up, so it's really just the aggregate one-time? That isn't, it's not every year that we're?
Well, it's, whoops, it's building into the base of your payroll cost, but it's not something that you have to do year after year after year. You're not going to have to add another 1.2% next year, but it will be into the base of your payroll cost.
Right. So when you say annual, annual cost to implement, it's the total cost to implement in one year? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
What you're trying to say, as opposed to every year, you're going to be looking at that?
So if you do option one, July 1st, next July 1st, your total payroll will be 1.2% higher than it would have been. But the next year, you're not going to also increase it another 1.2%. It's just already there.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions on that page? On page 14, are those bar charts? So you can clearly see, you know, for example, option, like with option one, at 30%, you've got nine folks, with option two, you've got eight, with option three, you've got six. So those do change, those bar charts, some. But you're, you don't, you know, exactly have the bell-shaped curve you would want, but you don't have that, you know, bad ski slip either. So you're in better shape, I would say, than the average organization on that. Over on page 15 is the actual pay table. And then on pages 16 and 17 is what is kind of the nub of the pay plan. That's the, those are the two pages you would adopt. And it shows the ranges and the grades in every job. Then past that is the actual salary data. You can look at the same salary data we compiled, look at how we, what decision we made, see what you think about it. In looking at salary data for entry-level jobs, we're looking sort of at an average, unless we've got, you know, an outlier that's pulling that average one way or the other. When we get to supervisory and management jobs, we're doing more of a compilation, or that's not the right word, but interpolation is what the word I want to use. So we're looking, for example, I keep thinking on the police chief. With the police chief, you know, we know that he doesn't have as many officers and vehicles and stuff to keep up. vehicles and stuff to keep up with as Chesapeake and Virginia Beach for sure, but also, you know, not as much as Kill Devil Hills. So we take that into account in looking at the scope of what's being managed when we look at management jobs. So are y'all ready? Go on to the next tab. So behind that second blue tab is all of the policy and benefits information. And the first several pages there, one through three, are some just general management recommendations for you to review. You may choose, these are things you want to do now, you may choose to put them on more in the long-range thought process. Pages four and five, we gave just an example of a police career development program. That is something we are seeing in most of the Dara County police agencies, so we wanted to give you an example of something that you could put together. On page six is the first page of the benefits comparison, and you'll see on that page, the only, we didn't recommend any changes until you get to retiree health insurance. There are two trends in retiree health insurance. Some organizations are getting rid of it and some are adding it. So there's not a clear trend. What is a clear trend in retiree health insurance is that if you do it, capping it when somebody becomes Medicare-eligible. So you're really only paying for those years until they get to 65, if they've retired previous to that. And what I did was just kind of pick something that was kind of along the market of what your other competitors are doing. If y'all choose you want to do that, and that is in the personnel policy, if that's something you choose you want to do. The other thing that we did, y'all have an unusual sick leave benefit. You are much higher than the market. Your sick leave goes up based on years of service. And I have, I don't know of, you know, maybe one or two other places in the whole state that have something other than one day a month. So we did recommend a market sick leave. On page seven, at the top half is vacation accord. And so the second line there, you can see duck current and duck proposed. Most of your competitors are going to more than 20 days a year for longer-term employees, so we did recommend increasing that a little bit. And then you do not have longevity, most of your competitors do. So we gave you a proposed longevity plan that, you know, you can tweak, you can ignore, but again, being competitive, we recommended something that we, and what we, I think what we caught there was some, pretty close to southern shores and an exit. Past that, we've provided an employment application that meets regulatory requirements that can be form-fillable and put on your website. And Drew, do not let me forget to give you the thumb drive for our lead. And that, there's that white page behind that is just where you do applicant tracking. And then following that is the personnel policy. It is a complete update. We, to try to amend in a way that we thought would be useful, would have taken, you know, dozens of amendments. So it was, it made more sense to start from scratch. And this reflects the things that you've seen in here. It reflects updated court cases, laws, regulations, more modern, in some cases, language. We did recommend updating your grievance procedure to a more modern approach to that. So a number of things in here, and again, I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, but I'm happy to come back and answer questions about that. And then the final thing, the last blue tab, is the job descriptions or class specifications in alphabetical order. And we recommend that you leave those administrative. What you adopt are the titles and the grades, but if, they will have digital copies of all of these. If they want, they need to tweak them, you know, if we missed something, left something out, misunderstood something, if a job changes a little bit but not enough to reclassify it, they can go in and update that. So we recommend leaving those administrative. And that is a quick overview of everything. So I'm happy again to answer any other questions you have now, and I'm happy to come back.
On the policy manual, is this, I don't want to call it boilerplate because it incorporates a lot of the work that you did too, but it's, it is sort of a standardized personnel manual.
What, what we do, and if you look behind that, I'm sorry, on the very first page, behind the policy tab, that top part where it says personnel policy and management recommendations, that those first, before you get to the middle part, that talks a little bit about the philosophy and approach we used with that. And number one there says, "Whenever possible, use standard language that stood the test of time, grievances, lawsuits." So we did try to use some standard language where it made sense for y'all.
Great. Thank you. I'm sure this will kind of talk about some of the, of the overarching changes that were made to the policy.
There's not a lot of detail in there on the, on the changes because there were so many. But again, I can, I can kind of do a review.
Okay. Is it, is it essentially because it was very dated, it had not been reviewed in a very long time, just as a quick reason for the complete overhaul? Great. Thank you.
I guess I have a question more from a legal standpoint, but like the pay and grades, does that require council approval or is that administrative? The same thing with the policy manual, is that administrative or is that require council approval of an ordinance, et cetera?
I think the council should, just like you did recently with the finance policy, I think you should approve all policies.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure they, we're not going to do it today, but that was just a legal question, I guess I had.
What we, what we tried to put in the policy is true policy, not a lot of administrative procedures and details, so that the staff can do the implementation of the policy, write procedures, write details, and not have to bother you with those. But if something major, like in the policy needs changing, they would come back to you for that.
I mean, like, we would approve the pay, pay ranges and grades, but not necessarily job descriptions? I mean, or would we approve the whole thing?
That's right. Yeah. You're approving the title, but we recommend leaving the job descriptions administrative so they can tweak and update those as needed.
Thank you.
Anything else I can respond to today?
Becky, I've got a question. There are several references in the personnel policy and management recommendations and in the policy itself to a human resources officer. Can you, are you able to elaborate any on how that would be implemented in the town of Duck?
If you look at page six and the personnel policy itself, under responsibilities of the human resource officer, what we've got is the town manager shall appoint a human resource officer or perform this role him or herself and delegate any or all of the responsibilities listed below. So basically, the manager is the human resource officer, but can delegate certain parts of this. But we wanted to create that role in the organization to make sure things happen that should happen. Did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any others?
Not at this time.
Well, I thank you very much for the opportunity to work with you. I have, the little time I've been able to spend in Duck, we have absolutely loved. We thoroughly enjoyed working with your staff, and I have to commend you on the manager you got. And my husband and I are always talking about trying to get here like in October, November, and spend some quality time, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Becky.
I think you would have made a good football coach too, with all that flow charting that you got there.
Thank you.
Drew, just a question, budget, and I'm sure you're going to cover it, but basically the recommendations have been put into the new budget, correct? From a standpoint of the adjustments?
Yes, sir. So option three, from pay and class, is included in the budget. Longevity, as recommended, is included in the budget. So if those are things that the council doesn't want to do as we go through the budget process, we can back them out a lot easier than we can add things in at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Now we're going to go on to item number three, presentation by Ken Wilson of Coastal Protection Engineering on the Town of Ducks 2022 Beach Renewishment Project. Welcome, Ken. Good to see you again.
Well, it's good to be up here in person, no Zoom today. It's great to see you all in person and picked a pretty good day to be up here. Adam is also up here with me. Adam's the project engineer for the project, but in terms of longevity, I guess you guys get me. But Adam's not new to this either, he's been around with us for seven or eight years or so. So I want to give you guys a little bit of an update on the beach nourishment project, and we've been obviously working with staff, with Joe, with Sandy, with Drew, who's jumped up to speed really quickly on the project. But we met last, last month in April, I believe, middle of April, and we were starting to put a lot of these pieces together, and we said, you know, it'd be good to bring this before council and give them a good thorough update of where we are with the project design. And just last week, we've got new survey data in from, from the April surveys, and so where we thought we had all this stuff packaged up in a nice neat box, now that we've got this new data, now we're sort of scrambling to make sure that we're checking this and checking that and that everything still makes sense. So at the end of this, really, the purpose of this briefing is to try to give you guys an update. It's been a little while since we've provided all this information, let you know what we've been doing, let you know, again, kind of how we're thinking about this project in terms of what are the goals of this re-nourishment, this maintenance event, give you that context, and then we're probably at a point right now where we're looking at, you know, somewhere maybe, maybe the mid-June meeting or something like that with some final recommendations in terms of updated volumes, updated costs, and that sort of thing. All right? But in terms of project volume, you know, so obviously, we went through this project, put this project out there in 2017. We've talked a lot about, in the past, about the idea that the project has a specific design, it's supposed to serve a specific purpose. If a specific design storm hits that project, it's supposed to provide a certain level of protection. But we also know that when we put sand out on the beach, that there were erosion rates before the project went in, there are erosion rates after the project went in, and that we, in order to keep that design in place, we have to provide, or we have to place additional sand, sort of sacrificial sand, to hold the line over the course of five years in between the maintenance, so that we always have that design in place, okay? So in monitoring these projects, that's kind of how we're looking at it. We're saying, all right, is our design intact and are we losing sand faster or slower than we thought we were going to lose that sacrificial sand? So these volumes that I've shown on the screen are volumes that we computed after we finished the 2020 monitoring report. And I think I had presented to council, maybe in January, something like that, but we've probably presented similar numbers at that time. And so if you look at the maintenance plan that we provided to you all, the maintenance plan assumed that the project would lose about six cubic yards on average per linear foot of the project every year. If you, if we're looking at a five-year maintenance cycle, that's six times five for every foot of beach, we're assuming that we're losing 30 cubic yards of sand over that five-year period, all right? And then everything behind that 30 cubic yards is the design. So when we look at the maintenance, we're expecting to put 254,000 cubic yards back on the beach, but we also know that Dorian took about 170,000 cubic yards off of the beach. And so we start at this point where we've got a total volume that we're looking at putting back in the upcoming project of 424,800. That's if we maintain that six cubic yards per foot average, and the 170,800 is sort of, it's sort of locked in place with FEMA and the work that we've been doing with FEMA. All right? And so that translates into cost at the bottom of that, that slide. This is the same, same graphic illustration that we show a lot of times. Again, it's just showing the different parts of the project. So I want to go through it and get to this point. This is just a good, real simple diagram that shows our design fill and our advanced fill. Think of those as two different things. All right? So with that 2020 data that we had last, that we collected last year and we updated you all in, in, in January, essentially, the designed beach itself, when you go out there and you drive the beach and you look at the dune, you can see that at the base of the dune, there's been scarping of that dune, all right? That's sort of indicative to the fact that some of that design that is, that is there to stay in place all the time has actually been lost. And there are a number of different ways we can estimate that loss, and it has to do with this principle of depth of closure that we've talked about a number of times. When we do a survey, we don't just survey the dry sand beach, we want to survey all the way down to a deeper depth to make sure that as sand moves up onto the beach and down into the lower part of the profile, that no matter where that sand moves, we're kind of tracking that sand as it's moving through the system. But there's some discretion in how we go about measuring that and how far offshore we go with that, that data to come up with those computations. And so the reason I bring that up is that we're, we're showing a loss of about 87,000 cubic yards of the design. If we were to sort of look at this a different way and look at different contours and say, how much have we lost above a specific contour, that number could change. It could go up a little bit, it could go down a little bit. And it's sort of the engineering discretion as to make a decision of what makes the most sense in terms of trying to put a, trying to put a number on that loss of the designed beach. All right? And then we also look at the rate of loss. So we talked about, when we designed this project, we were estimating about six cubic yards of foot per year loss. And as of 2020, when we looked at the rates between, say, 2018 and 2020, we were coming up with a higher rate. We were coming up with just under 11 cubic yards of, of, of sand per foot per year. So if we, if we say that that's our rate in 2020, we're two years from going to construction, plus our construction maintenance interval is five years. That's a seven-year period from where we measured in 2020, that we need to, that if that erosion rate keeps up for seven years, we want to be able to put that amount of volume back on the beach at the end of this cycle. And so we did a simple calculation of seven years of this erosion, comes up to about 604,000 cubic yards. So that's, that's one way of looking at how much sand we have to put back on the beach. You know, you could say, all right, well, Ken, how much sand have we lost since we built the project? That's how much sand we want to put back out on the beach. But we can tell you what that volume is, but it's less than these numbers that we're looking up here. Because if we go out and we just place the amount of sand that we've lost during the last five years on the beach, I'm telling you right now that we've lost some of that design protection. So if we go through the same process and just put the amount of sand that we lost over the last five years back on the beach, at the end of those five years, we don't quite have that design that we were shooting for when we first developed the project, okay? So it's a couple of different ways of looking at this. And so if we do this math right now, we're looking at potentially not placing 424,800 cubic yards out, which is what we were, what we were estimating based on that six cubic yards plus the FEMA cost, the FEMA sand. We're looking at an increase of, of, you know, 50 or 60% of that number in volume of sand. All right? So part of what we've been doing in this engineering analysis is not just looking at, you know, measuring these rates every year and looking at how the beach is changing, but trying to figure out, how do we, how do we adaptively manage this project and go out there and do something a little bit different in the 2022 project that improves the performance of the project? Obviously, we can always put more sand out there, but is there something that we can do more than just put more sand out there? And so our engineering analysis has been focused on, one, making sure that we're, we're doing the best job we can to predict this, this advanced fill or this background erosion that you guys are, will experience starting in 2022 over the next five years. You know, what is, what is that new rate? We think it's more than six cubic yards per foot. How do we plan better for that? The berm height elevation is another... And we went through a pretty rigorous analysis to see if it made sense to build that beach a little lower or to build that beach a little bit higher. Would the, would the project perform a little bit better if we did that? One of the conclusions that we've come up with is we feel pretty comfortable about keeping it at that plus-six-foot contour. It's something that some of the other neighboring communities are also doing, just going through that analysis. The risk is essentially, if you, if you build that beach up too high, you can end up with really severe scarps, not over on the, on the dune, but actually out in the middle of the beach. There's a few of those on the southern part of the town, actually south of the beach nourishment project. There's some short scarps there in the, in the berm. So we want to make sure we were in the right ballpark. If you build that too low, every time you've got a, you've got a storm event, the water can come up over top of that, and then you start potentially chewing into your dune before, you know, at an earlier stage in the game. So we've, we've looked at that analysis. And then the third was really, how can we, is there a way that we can reconfigure the way that we're building this beach out there to allow the project to perform a little bit better? And so we set up this numerical model, pretty complicated modeling system. The model's called DEL 3D. But essentially, we're calibrating this for waves and water levels, and then we're actually calibrating it for morphology. So how the sand is moving around in the system. And we're working with, we work with this model to get it calibrated to where we're actually seeing the model reproduce some of the volumetric changes that we've observed since the project was built. And once we have that model set up, then we start putting different, different project configurations into the model to see how they perform in this simulation. So we started with five different alternatives looking at. The very first one is sort of our baseline. We took that 424,800 cubic yards that I mentioned was sort of like what was in the beach management plan plus the FEMA sand. And so let's just spread this all the way along the project area evenly. Let's rebuild the dunes in those sections where we know we've lost some of the dune. And then whatever, whatever the volume left we have, let's spread it evenly along the entire project. That's what we refer to as alternative one. Alternative two is we take that added sand. When we looked at, all right, we've lost a certain amount of the design, we think the erosion rate is higher than we had projected. If we take all of that, you know, close to 700,000 cubic yards and put it out there, spread it evenly, similar to alternative one, just a better or a wider fill density, that would be alternative two. And then we looked at a couple of different options of instead of spreading that differential between the 424,800 and this, you know, number that's closer to 700,000, instead of spreading all of that evenly, what if we pile that sand up preferentially in the middle of the project? And then we also said, well, we, we believe that we're losing, we've got higher erosion rates in the southern part of the project. What if we preferentially pile that sand up in the southern part of the project as well? Can we maintain more sand in the system, slow down the rate of loss off of the project area by doing that? And we ran those first couple of simulations, and somebody mentioned, you know, what about, what if you do the opposite? What if you place all the sand at the northern part, which didn't seem intuitive at the time? Put all that sand in the northern part. So we, so we've got this model, we can simulate these things pretty quickly. So we went ahead and ran all five of those simulations. All right? So this, this chart here essentially shows, it takes all of these complex processes in the model and really boils it down to a couple of numbers. And there are all kinds of graphics that we can show you. The next slide has one graphic that's still pretty overly simplified. But one of the things that you can get caught up with when you, when you develop these models is that it can create really great graphics. And then you start zooming into these graphics and you start, you start believing that the model is perfect in every sort of way. And so a lot of times, you'll see us try to step back and provide, you know, very basic numbers to try to assess, you know, how effective, how effective these are. And so really, what we're looking for, looking at is relative performance of these alternatives. Okay? So alternative one, the fact that this number is negative means that by putting 424,900 cubic yards out there over a five-year period, all of that was gone. We had a deficit at the end of the five-year, but we sort of already knew that. So if we spread everything evenly and add that additional volume, we've got around 25% remaining after five years. And then we look at those, those first two alternatives where we preferentially piled the material up in the center. Alternative three is piling it up in the center. Alternative four is piling it up on the south end. Alternative five is piling it up on the north end. So piling it up in the center and piling it up in the south performed very similarly. Piling it up in the north actually improved the performance. Again, it's not exactly intuitive, but the more that we started thinking about this in terms of sediment transport and the way that the project has actually performed over the, over the last couple of years, this, this starts to make a little bit more sense, this idea of placing sand in the northern part of the project. All right? So this is, this is one of those graphics that I mentioned, and all I really want to, all I really want to, let's see, where's the pointer? There it is. All I really want to stress is this top graphic. Essentially, this is the configuration of the fill at the beginning of the model process. So what you can see is the, if you can see, the black line is that base fill. Everything spread across the middle basically goes across here. But when we start adding in preferential sand to the middle or to the north or to the south, essentially, in that section, we're doubling the fill density in that section. So it's, it's going to be dramatic if we construct the project like that. Clearly, there will be some sections that receive a much wider fill density. All right? So I talked a little bit about the fact that we were losing more sand in the southern part of the project than in the northern part of the, or in the northern part of the project. And so one of the, one of the numbers that we generated from this model is, instead of looking along the entire project area, now we're only looking at the southern part of the project. And so we're saying, all right, well, the performance along the entire project is important, but how is this performing in the southern part where we think we lost the most volume since we've been monitoring it? And so we've got our starting volumes along the southern part of the project. These are the percents remaining after two years. And then we go back to those percents remaining after five years, which is what I showed on the previous slide. Here, again, we, here, it's a little bit more interesting. Alternative three, piling it up in the middle. Alternative four, piling it up in the south. And alternative five, piling it up in the north. All of those are very similar numbers in terms of what we're looking at with this model. So they, they all seem to perform pretty similarly in that southern part. That's our takeaway there. So we've got these initial five alternatives. The alternative three and four seem to perform very similarly overall. Alternative five, placing the material in the north end resulted in more fill remaining within the project area after five-year simulation. And then evaluation of the volume along the southern half of the project area, essentially, alternative three and five, and four for that matter, are performing very similarly. Okay? So we want to say, let's, let's take this a little bit further. We've got some good information. We're starting to lean in one direction or another. So we looked at some other alternatives. We said, all right, well, what if we pick a volume somewhere in between those two? What if, you know, what if for budgetary reasons, or what if for, you know, the bids come back higher than anticipated? What if we have to back this volume off a little bit? Does that change the way these things perform if we, if we thin up the fill density? And so again, we took the, that same starting, you know, alternative one with everything spread evenly, the 424,000 cubic yards, and, and we took that extra volume, which is a smaller volume, and we, we spread it out over the same sections. We just didn't push that preferential area out quite as far. And when we ran that with the lower volume, we found that alternative three and five performed very similarly over the five-year simulation. So we don't have the fact that, well, placing it at the north end performs a lot better than placing it in the south end. If we have to back that volume down a little bit, they become closer and closer in performance. So it's not as conclusive that one is better than the other. The other thing that we looked at is that 550,000 cubic yards running that, it did appear that at the end of that simulation, that we were starting to get to a point where we think that we will be in, in, you know, negative numbers. So again, even if we rebuild the design and place that 550, at the end of the five-year cycle, we may start chewing into the, into the design again. All right? And then we also looked at the idea of potentially spreading that material a little bit wider, not quite as wide as that alternative two where we spread it all the way down the project. But, but essentially, the area that we've pushed out is about 3,000 feet long, and then it tapers down 1,000 feet on each section. So that, that bulge that I showed is essentially 5,000 feet long, but the middle, the thickest part is about 3,000 foot. We said, what if we spread that out a little bit more? And by spreading it out a little bit more, the, very quickly, the fill starts to perform similar to if we just spread it all the way down the beach either way. So there wasn't a big benefit of trying to spread that out a little bit more. One other exercise that we went through while we've got that model set up and started simulating and looking at things a little bit different, I want to show you this kind of simple graphic here. And I want you to, to picture, this is a cross-section of the beach. Okay? We show a lot of profiles, but up here is your dry sand beach. This is the water line. This is coming down. You've got a bar here, sand bar. Very, very simple, simple drawn illustration that I want to, we use to illustrate something. So when we build these projects, we build a flat sand beach out at an elevation of six feet. And then at that point in time, we tell the contractor, okay, when you hit this point on the beach, you're going to start sloping the material down on a particular slope until it intercepts whatever the profile looks like out there. So it, depending on what the profile looks like, that distance can change, how much volume goes in it. That's why these numbers change a lot. So the last time we built the project, we built it with a slope of one, one foot of vertical drop equals 15 feet of horizontal. Okay? So we show these graphics all the time in an exaggerated profile, but I wanted to put it on the screen to show what it looks like unexaggerated. Okay? So that would be a one-on-15. When we, when we set up those original alternatives that I talked about, the first five, that's how, that's how the fill was set up. It was set up on that one-on-15 slope. But when we looked at that, we, when we submitted our permit applications, there's a limit to how far out we asked to be able to place sand. And that limit was actually based on how far we placed the sand in the 2017 project. Now, there's nothing magical about that number, and if we need to go back to the agencies and get them to modify that, we can modify it. But it's a little bit of an extra step. And so we said to ourselves, well, what if we, we were already looking at the potential of changing this slope because of the way that that material stacked up the last time we built the project? We said, well, what if we change the slope to a one-on-10? We lock in our offshore position to where we're limited by the permit, and we build up on a one-on-10 slope from there. And essentially, it makes the berm widths a little bit wider, but we're still talking about putting the same amount of volume in that area. It's just a different shape of the way that it's configured. All right? So here's really the, I mean, that's a non-exaggerated one-on-10 versus one-on-five. Somebody walking down the beach isn't going to notice it. It's just, it's just going to result in a little bit different fill configuration. And so we did, we did run through that exercise, and the bottom numbers, the top five rows are what we showed on those previous slide, the bottom two numbers are the updates to this. But what it, what it looked like off of the bat is that by changing that slope, the simulation is showing that it didn't perform quite as well as, as these other three. Now, these are fairly new numbers, and Adam and I have spent a lot of time over the last week thinking about this a little bit more, and we've talked to some of the folks in our office. There are things that you see sometimes that aren't intuitive, but the idea that the project performance would change that much because of that difference in slope is something that we'd like a little bit more time to look at and see if that really, if that really does pass the, pass the test. But again, by changing that slope, these two numbers continue to be very similar to each other, alternative three and alternative five. If you had to guess, I mean, there's a, there's two and a half percent difference there or something like that, maybe you'd say alternative five, placing the material at the north end, performs a little bit better. Okay? So we did that same exercise, looking at the south end. You know, again, not a whole lot of difference. The south end numbers seem to, seem to be very similar. So we're not seeing a whole lot of difference in the south, just over the whole project area. All right? So we've analyzed these similar fill densities of alternative three and five with the modified slope. This is just summary. Both simulations show lower percent volume remaining after the five years than the initial alternative three and five. Of the two modified alternatives, alternative five, it, you know, it's a very slight difference, but alternative five, placing that sand up in the north area, seems to be a little bit better. And along the southern half, they, they seem to perform very similarly. All right? So we showed this slide earlier. One of the things that threw us for a little bit of a loop is that we've got these new numbers now from the survey that was done last, last year. And we've, we've done some cursory calculations. We, actually, on the way up here, we had one of our guys in the office run some numbers, and we dug through them a little bit yesterday. But before we start throwing out these, these new numbers, we'd like to take a little bit of a better look at it. The initial calculation suggests that this 10.9 cubic yards per foot number has gone up a little bit. All right? We would have thought that that number would have come down a little bit as you go further and further into the project. You know, typically, when you see these erosion rates, the erosion rate in the first year is one, as you get into year two, it gets a little less, year three gets a little less. And as you get five years, you know, you're really reflecting the changes that went on during that period. But first run through that number, through those numbers, you know, quick and dirty calculations, it looks like that number has gone up a little bit, that 10.9. So we want to go back and we want to sit down and take our time in looking at that number. If that number went up, if that rate went up, then most likely, the amount of the designed beach, this lost number, has probably gone up a little bit as well. So trying to figure out what is that sweet spot of the total volume? If we, if our goal really is to accurately produce what we think is going to happen over the next five years, plus we want to reestablish that design that was put in place in 2017, we want to calculate that volume. But if that volume is in excess of, you know, the town's ability to put all of that volume back in place, then we need to volume, then we need to value engineer that, that number and figure out, you know, obviously, we're doing it with the simulation and looking at these different configurations and trying to find a configuration that we think is going to better the erosion rate that occurred over the last, you know, five years. We think by configuring the material in a certain way, that over the next five years, that fill is going to perform a little bit better. There's also, you know, just sort of historical context of these projects, that the longer you have these projects in place, going into the second cycle, the third cycle, the fourth cycle, that there's an overall sort of resetting of the baseline, if you will, of the offshore features, you know, right offshore of the Town of Duck. We know that that area, when we, when we were first hired back in 2011, looking at that stretch of beach north of the FRF, you had just gone through some pretty dramatic erosion rates. But the erosion rate hadn't always been that high in that particular stretch. And we went back and looked at data, I think back to like 1999, and showed that, you know, that rate of change wasn't always that way in that section. But at some point in time, things changed in the offshore environment, and that became a very focused area, and we lost a lot of sand at one point in time. So, you know, the silver lining essentially is that, you know, there is good, there is good past history of being able to, you know, go through these cycles, and each time you go through the cycle, you're improving the performance. It looks like we've got some positive feedback from that model, that there are some things we can do with the fill configuration to slow that erosion rate down. But we are going to need a little bit more time to, to determine specifically what we think that number is in terms of putting everything back and rebuilding the design, planning for what we think the erosion rate is going to be. And if there's a, if there's a, if there's a need to sort of meet in the middle somewhere like that, we can do that. You know, we've talked a couple of times in the past about the fact that the project that we're working on down in Kitty Hawk and Killable Hills, and now it looks like it's going to add on southern shores, you know, that, that project was close to six miles or close to five and a half miles. Now it looks like combined three towns, it's going to be close to eight miles. And, you know, it's a lot easier to get those long projects to perform than the mile-and-a-half project that we're wrestling with up here at Duck. The model shows that it looks like we've got some positive things that we can do to improve the situation, but we want to get that latest data kind of processed and wrap our, wrap our brains around that. And then we'll come back to you guys on sort of that prescribed volume, what that would look like in terms of dollars, and then, you know, talk about if we, if we need to start backing down from that number. There's nothing, you know, everybody has, God bless you.
Thank you.
Everybody's got, you know, finite resources. It's not unheard of to sort of, you know, incrementally try to get back up to a certain level. There's nothing, you know, everybody has, God bless you.
Thank you.
Everybody's got, you know, finite resources. It's not unheard of to sort of, you know, incrementally try to get back up to a certain level and building back up the level of protection. I was telling Drew earlier today, you know, the Kitty Hawk project, when we first looked at it, we were trying to design it the same way the town of Duck and the town of Killable Hills were designed, to provide the specific level of protection. But there just, there wasn't the budget there to be able to do it. And so the design, the thought there was a little bit different. It was to prevent all the overwashing and the flooding. And the project's done that really well. But there's still probably a number of vulnerable structures out there. Over the last year, we've looked at, can we, now that the project has performed pretty well out there, could we bolster their dune up a little bit more and start to provide a little bit more protection than they started with? And so there is a good model for sort of incrementally doing this. It's, it's just, you know, it's important to maintain that support of the project even when you get numbers that are, you know, that, that, that aren't what you expected them to be. So let's see what else we've got here. So these are just some design considerations. Essentially, these are what we want to work on over the next, over the next couple of weeks, using the 2021 data to update that background erosion, the volumes and the design volume deficit, focusing in on where to put that higher fill density of volume. It does look like we can improve the, the, the performance of the project by potentially placing that material in the central section or the northern section, sort of hone in on, on that, those design considerations. Final thing in terms of an update, want to give you a schedule update. Everything is red is essentially something that's changed since the last time we reported to you. Let's see where that cursor is. Never know if it's on the left or the right. Right? So the engineering design, obviously, the fact that we're still talking about that, this number has bled a little bit. We're looking at finishing this up next, next month, June 2021. The federal permitting, we have submitted, everything from a permitting standpoint has been submitted since about February. That tracks very well with having our KAMA permits in place by the middle of July, which is when we want to bid these projects. Our environmental folks tell us that the BLM process and the Corps of Engineers regulatory process are moving forward about the same speed. Everything looks like we should have all of the, the permit conditions and so forth in July, which is right on schedule. The development of the construction plans and specs, that's, you know, the reason, we're not building this project for another year, but the, the reason that we're so, you know, fixated on making sure that we've got these designs in place is because we want to give the contractor as close to what they're going to build as possible so that we can get, you know, good prices for, for, they, they, they have a good expectations of, of what they're going to build. But that seems to be on, 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 on schedule. We want to hit that middle of July timeframe. Adam and I have talked to four or five, four of the dredge contractors that are likely to bid on this project over the last couple of months. They seem okay with this schedule. Everybody asks, you know, do you think your numbers are right? Like, well, we think our numbers are right, but you know, we'll, we'll be on pins and needles until we open these bids, and we know that they're right. But all of the feedback that we've gotten from the dredgers has been really encouraging. They feel like the, the, the industry will have good capacity if we keep on this schedule. Some of the things that we're trying to tweak, access is certainly a big issue. I know Sandy's been doing, doing a ton of work on trying to figure out the access situation. We talked to a contractor last week, I think, and we asked him, we're like, look, we know in other parts of the country, you guys can bring things in actually by barge if you had no access. I'm like, is that even in the cards? He's like, we do that in Louisiana, we do that in some other places. He's like, he's like, he's like, it would cost millions of dollars to try to do that because of the risk of, you know, are they going to be delayed months and months and months, waiting for that perfect day to be able to bring a barge in and, and bump it up to the beach to unload pipe or unload bulldozer? So I said, yeah, that, that, that's, that's not an issue. So I meant to tell Sandy that she can, she can let the communities know that it would cost millions of dollars if we cannot figure this out. But anyway, so we're, we're, the schedule, you know, there's, there are some things that have changed there, but the schedule looks pretty good for getting this thing out to bid in the timeframe that we've been shooting for. And that's all I've got in terms of the, the update. Questions?
Ken, it's not really a question, but you know, I guess that's a concern and observation. If we go back in history, in 2017, we spent 15 million to put sand on the beach and basically said five years out, it's going to cost us about 5 million to re-nourish. And right now, we've got escarpment on the dunes, we've got a usable beach, we haven't lost any houses or pools, there's still a lot of dune protection. We did lose more because of Dorian, but by the way, FEMA is going to pay for that. So now we're talking about taking the beach back where it was in 2017, or where we, when we designed it and finished it, at $8 million. But my fear is, now we're talking about three to four more million dollars and escalating costs, and we're still going to get over the five years, significant, you know, depreciation of the sand and get us back to where we're going to be, almost where we were before. So, you know, my concern is, you know, why would we want to spend all that additional money when in fact, we can put the beach back where it was? And if in fact, we do have another Dorian over the next five years, hopefully not, more than likely FEMA will be there to help us reimburse it. So, you know, my real concern is escalating this from $8 million to 10 or 12 million, which is almost like re-nourishing or nourishing the beach all over again. And so as one council member here, I really have a concern about perhaps escalating the design and escalating the cost. And our commitment really is to maintain the beach and get it back to where it was, which would where it was in 2017. So I, I really am going to be concerned about all this additional sand we're talking about. You know, that's, that's my concern and, and my observation. I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I see this thing escalating to a point where it's going to be significant cost to the town and our taxpayers.
It's really good, good feedback. It's the kind of stuff that really helps us, you know, focus in on where the, where the priorities are. I mean, we, we've talked about design and, you know, we've, we've talked to you all a lot about, you know, the idea of the, the design was sort of like mimicking a storm that was similar to Hurricane Isabel. Obviously, Dorian wasn't anything close to Hurricane Isabel. But that's, you know, that's sort of why you've got this design to sort of protect from that. But no, no one said that Dorian, or that Isabel is the worst that could ever get. You know, we can design for that, but we could have picked a different storm that was, for budgetary reasons, we said that, you know, acceptable level of storm damage reduction was Dorian. And so the design would have been less, you know, the initial cost would have been less and, you know, that, that sort of thing. So, so thinking in terms of that is a very prudent, you know, concept and something that, that we'll continue to work with you guys on to try to figure that out. I mean, certainly, we can, it's very easy to calculate, you know, how much volume have we lost? We'll just put that much volume back when the dredge shows up. Okay? But that, that's just to say that if the, if we don't get an improvement in the performance, then, you know, we're always going to have a little bit less design in place at the end of our five-year cycle than we thought we would. But maybe just by putting the amount that we lost over the five years and changing the configuration, that at least we're keeping up with background erosion. And then maybe the next cycle, we can look at trying to, trying to beef it back up again or something like that. So you definitely have options. We're, you know, we're trying to anticipate these things and providing you all the information that will help make those decisions.
Ken, I had a question about the, the engineering costs. So whether we went with a project where it was spread out evenly, or we went with one where there was a hump, north, south, or in the middle, does it dramatically change the, the actual engineering cost of the project if we go with a different strategy?
Yeah, I mean, we, so the, the contract that we're under right now for the design and the permitting all anticipated that we were going to look at those types of changes. And so, you know, in effect, you've already paid for the assessment of trying to figure out how to, how to improve, how to adaptively manage the project, improve the performance over time. The construction of the project, it wouldn't change that.
It wouldn't.
And we've, and we've talked to the contractors specifically about that because we didn't know how far out we were going to push it and, you know, how thin. And really, when it comes to the contractor's perspective, if you get to a point where it's too thin, it can affect your cost. But going out, I mean, they're happy to sit in the same location and not have to move all this stuff out. So going fatter is not an impact on, on their cost. You know, it's still a unit cost, is how you're looking at it. But we have talked to them about, you know, these tweaks that we seem to be, you know, still wrestling with, which, which of these tweaks would have cost implications? They seem to be pretty comfortable with, with that sort of thing that we were talking about.
Then the other question I had, and it may just have been the way the graphic looked, is if we went from a one to, from 115 to 110, it looked like, you know, the sand didn't go out quite as far.
Right.
Right? And so I guess I was thinking about all the griping about, you know, oh, it takes so long to get to the beach now. You know, all of the sort of the, the user realities. That if we go with the, you know, and I don't know if we're just talking afoot, like you said, no one's going to notice the difference between 15 and 10. Maybe they wouldn't notice the difference between the end of 10 and 15 where it ended.
Yeah, I think they, it would be, it would be noticeable difference in terms of walking from the dune to the water, for sure. But as far as that slope going down, I don't think, you know, the naked eye would really be able to pick that up too much. But you're right. And, and that's what we're talking about. We're trying to balance, you know, if we, if we assume we need a certain amount of volume, we can spread that out with a steeper slope and bump that volume, that, that, that berm out a little bit further, or we can, you know, make that a little bit more gradual. And, and the point to where they get to the water would be shorter.
Okay.
But that's what, that's one of the things that we want to take another look at that model to see if that, that made that much sense. I mean, we're getting a little bit into the weeds, but looking at the performance of the model over the first two years, it seemed to, it seemed to look like that slope didn't matter much and that the changes were really occurring from year two to five, which is completely counterintuitive. Because the system is equilibrating, it, it, you know, you can build it on whatever slope you want it to, within six months, you know, nature's going to rework that slope to something more natural. So the idea that the model was suggesting that in the first two years, there was, you know, they were pretty similar, and then year three to five, there was some kind of difference, makes us think that, you know, we want to check that and see if that makes, makes sense. But the slope, I mean, that's another good, good point that we can keep in mind.
Ken? Go ahead. Who's asking?
I was just going to ask one more quick question. The 266,000 cubic feet that we'd add, is it safe to say that's a four to, four to five million dollar add?
I think, I think it's around four. I think it, I, I think we looked at a number that was around 300,000, just because those numbers that we came, that we, that we just got seemed to be a little bit higher. So we looked at a round number of 300. And that, that had an impact of, you know, a little over $4 million. The problem is, it's not, it's not a straight calculation of the volume, because when you're looking at all four towns combined, the mobilization cost is split based on how much volume. So if you guys double the amount of volume, there's a, there's a nonlinear impact of the amount of the mobilization fee, which we have estimated as a fixed cost. But you'd be paying more of that fixed cost, and it, it's not a linear.
But it's safe to say we'd be in the range of 11 to 12 million dollars probably, starting at a point of 8 million right now.
Just from a cost perspective, to, to add $300,000 to the project would, would be north of 4 million.
More than 4 million?
North, north, yeah, north.
North of 4 million.
North of 4 million. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. I appreciate the overview and, and taking some of these complex, you know, things and bringing them down to a level that's able, we're able to digest. I had a couple of specific questions about a couple of slides, but it seems as though the erosion rate for Duck is almost double of what we anticipated. It's passing 11% and we were estimating six. And we can say that that's, I guess my question on the erosion rate is, we're, we're kind of off on that. And is that due to storms? But it seems like it wouldn't be because it's naturalized over the five years, and we've had some years with bad storms and others without. And how does that erosion rate in Duck compare to the rest of the towns?
Yeah, the, the other towns are keeping up pretty closely with what we predicted. I think, I think Killable Hills and, I think Killable Hills and Kitty Hawk are both under, we had, we had similar predictions around that, that six cubic yard. I think they might have been closer to four or something like that, or three. But they're in the three to four foot range. I think Killable Hills may actually be close to nothing, the last time that, you know, looking at that 2021 data. But, you know, again, it's at the end of a very long project, and those projects are benefiting from the fact that, you know, they're, they're part of this long project. And, and the fact that we've got the small, you know, section of 1.6 miles, 1.7 miles out there is why, you know, we believe that, that the erosion rate is so much higher. If anything, the, you know, tracking the, you know, or the, the impacts of waves and things like that with some of the complex offshore features down off of Kitty Hawk, Killable Hills, you might expect that there are, you know, more focused areas that have really high erosion rates down there. And then, and there are a couple, but when you average it all out, you know, their, their projects as a whole are performing pretty well. But this one is, this one is definitely higher than the others.
Oh, yeah. It seems like it based on what you just told us. And, and of course, we knew that with the project being so critical when we went into this for the 2017 nourishment project, because it was critical at that time with, you know, a lot of structures and things that were very, very threatened. One of the questions I also have about, you know, sort of the, putting the whole bunch of sand and, you know, bumping it or whatever we're calling that, on the taper areas. I mean, if you go north, how does that affect the taper area if you put it all in the northern part? Does that make more sand go past the project area? And also, we are dealing with a hard stop at the Army Corps property on the south end. Are you taking any of that into consideration?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a thought when we were looking at placing it down on the south end. But, you know, that, that fill, that, that fill kind of equilibrated pretty quickly and formed its own natural taper down there on the south. I mean, I don't know, if, if it was the best solution, I don't think there's anything that they could do to say, you know, no, don't do it. I mean, we would show them, you know, the data and talk to them about it if they wanted us to try to tweak it. In terms of placing it up on the north end, I mean, we've, we've definitely seen the benefits of the project, both north and south of, you know, the project area. So we know that, that, that volume that we'd like to keep inside of the project is certainly staying and benefiting the rest of the town of Duck. It's just a matter of how do we, how do we configure this thing? I mean, in other places, they'd be talking about structures, you know, could you, could you put a structure at the south end of Duck right up against the field research facility and keep that material in place? Obviously, that doesn't, you know, that's not really an option right now. But, you know, it's about trying to keep as much of that sand in that, in that problem area. I, I don't know if you guys have specific concerns north of the project area. I, I think that, I think that placing that amount of material, you know, up in that section, you're still probably going to see some similar benefits. We would hope that more of that material would move south into the rest of the project. That seems to be what the, the model is, is suggesting, that more of that material would move south. But certainly, piling that sand up there would have some benefits to the folks just north of the project.
So you wouldn't taper any more than you would? You'd keep it in the project area? Or would you, I, I mean, I'm just curious. I, I, the science is going to speak for itself or what we decide in terms of costs and everything. But I just, I guess, you know, because that was a critical factor. And the one pushback that we got from the northern taper, hey, we're paying this MSD just like everyone else, and we're only getting, so would it be in the MSD area and you just pile it and then just let it naturally taper? I know I'm getting a little bit specific, but I just want to understand.
This is still a little bit oversimplified view of it. But essentially, this would be the taper. This is, this is profile D10. I think this is Skimmer Way and Oyster Catcher. I'm not sure. Is this Oyster Catcher? Okay. So the, the stopping point of the main fill of the project is just south. It's a couple houses south of Oyster Catcher. And then the, the end of the taper is another 500 feet south, pretty close to where Skimmer Way comes up and makes that right-hand turn. And so we would still have a taper at the end of the fill, but the, the majority of the bump would be along this 3,000-foot section. And then we would have a taper of the bump that would come down to about Oyster Catcher. And then the project itself would have another 500-foot taper. So the whole thing from way up here is tapered almost, you know, 1,500 feet or so down to get to the north end.
Okay. Thank you.
How much of that, Ken, is offshore? Is all that light green offshore?
I was, I was looking at, we had some graphics. In the center of that section, I think we were looking at, we were looking at pushing the, the six-foot contour, which would be a little bit higher than the dry sand beach, the, the six-foot contour, which would be a little bit higher than the dry sand beach, where the dry sand beach was if you were out there today. Pushing that point on a flat six-foot beach, I mean, I, I think we had, I think we had widths of like 200, 250 feet, pushing that sand 200, 250 feet out, and then starting the one on 15 or the one on 10 slope down. So it's, it would be, it would be a considerable, you know, platform of sand for sure. And you could, you know, you could put some sand fencing up there. We've seen the success of the sand fencing, obviously. As long as you've got that big wide platform, you're catching lots of sand. We saw that after the first project. But the, the real idea is to try, try to create some configuration that would make that, make more of that sand stay in place over the five-year period.
I just had one other question about the slide that showed those alternatives and the, and the effectiveness of it, you know, the modeling slide where you showed the 28, yeah, 34% that one that you just had on there a minute ago. Why is the initial volume of cubic yard sand increasing in that model? I didn't follow that.
Yeah. Some of that has to do with the way that the volumes are calculated. And so initially, our goal was to put the same amount of volume in each one of those alternatives. And if you calculate those volumes based on the, you know, based on the way that we would calculate volumes on a profile, say, I know the volume I'm placing on this profile, I know the volume I'm placing on this profile 1,000 feet away, I'm going to average that in between and come up with a volume. If you do it in that way, which is the way that we set that original design up, those numbers are very similar. But when it's actually constructed in, over top of the, you know, the surface that's in the model, the numbers ended up being a little bit different. And so we've wrestled with those a little bit, you know, to try to get, I think in, in some of the later alternatives that we did, some of the, you know, where we were spreading it a little bit thinner or, or pulling it in a little bit, we were trying, we, we did the calculations a little bit different to try to get those numbers as close as possible. But, yeah, ideally, we would want those numbers to be exactly the same, but that's why we, you know, that's why we haven't shown it as specifically the amount of volume that we've lost in each one of those, because what we want to look at is a relative difference. You know, how much of that initial volume, what percentage of the initial volume placed was actually lost or was remaining, so.
Any additional questions for Ken?
Can you find us 300,000 yards of sand somewhere?
We will do our best, for sure. We will do our best.
What did you say?
He said, can you find us 300,000 cubic yards of sand someplace?
Well, that's the other problem is like sourcing the sand is no, no easy task.
Right.
And, you know, we've seen the, the sourcing and, and those little, looks like someone took a rake out there and they're like, you can't go in here anymore. So I'm constantly worried about the idea that we don't have enough sand, even if we could afford it.
Yeah, I think, I definitely think there'll be some more work to do between, you know, once we get this thing built in 2022 and looking forward to the, the next event of, you know, trying to, trying to look at that a little bit more closely. I think we've got some ideas, but it's still, it's still a finite resource. I mean, whether it's a 20-year finite resource or a, you know, 50-year finite resource or a 10, it's, it's still what we're looking at, what we know is out there is finite. So there, there's a need to know, is there more? Obviously, trying to keep as much of it in place and extending your renourishment interval is, is ideal, so.
And it seems like it's just a really bad spot right there. I mean, you know, like whether it's the underground river that was, you know, from the dinosaur age and all that, or what? I mean, it is not, it's not a friendly, and because that used to be one of the most beautiful wide beaches that we had down here in the 80s. And then all of a sudden, it's just.
Yeah. And that's one, I mean, that's one of the things that we're trying to look at is, you know, can you sustain that continuing to place sand back there? Obviously, the escalating costs are a real concern that the mayor was talking about, but do you get to a point after a couple of these cycles where you've covered up whatever is out there that's causing those issues, or you've changed the offshore topography enough to where whatever was causing that focusing effect of, of the erosion in that section, that it's, it's closer to where it was before that was a hotspot? And now you're managing, you know, more reasonable erosion rates as opposed to, you know, fighting the battle that we're fighting right now?
Yeah.
That's, that's ultimately the goal.
Thank you very much, Ken. Thank you, Adam.
Sounds like we'll see you soon.
Okay. Why don't we take a 10-minute recess and come back at 3:25? Okay, the council is back in session. Our next item is going to be the discussion of the proposed 2022 full-year budget. We're going to do it a little differently than we've done in the past. Drew is going to actually go through a presentation. We can follow along in our books, and as we get to specific revenues and/or expenses, as you have questions, we'll address it then. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager. Drew?
I'm sorry, just to understand, we're going to interrupt him or we're going to wait?
We're going to interrupt him.
Okay.
Please interrupt.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I, I didn't want to be impolite.
Because, because we really need to talk about those items when in fact he's talking about them.
Makes sense.
Yeah. He doesn't mind interruptions.
No, not at all. So, yeah, we're just going to, like we did the last time, when I presented the, the gross needs summary, it wasn't really a budget, although some, there was some confusion, I think, in, in the public, I guess, when they saw that we were, you know, there was some concern about being a million dollars out of balance, that, but it wasn't it. So we were, it was a gross needs summary, basically, in the form of a budget. Got your guidance. Thank you for that at the last meeting we had regarding the budget. So now we're going to start, again, very high level, talk about revenue, some of the new positions, and nothing really there has changed since that first draft that you saw. And then we'll go department by department, reviewing expenditures. Lastly, look at the five-year forecast and then talk about what's next. So here's where we were, just as a recap. So when we brought the gross needs, which was, which was an estimate of revenue, and then all of the needs of the organization, we were, there was a delta there of about With your input, because we knew that we either needed to reduce expenditures or increase revenue, we did a little bit of both with your input. So where we are now is we have a balanced draft budget for you. Interestingly enough, we took about half of it in increase in revenue, using your guidance about an increase in the tax rate to 22 cents, and then also took half of it in reduction in expenditure. Those were laid out in a memorandum that you received from me that had the updated pages for the draft budget document as well. So we are balanced. This is just a summary of what we changed on the revenue side. So thought we were a little aggressive in the 1% increase in the assessed value. Took that back to half a percent for both the ad valorem and for the MSDs. And then applied the 22 cent tax rate to the ad valorem. No change in the MSD tax rates. So that, those are the changes that you see there. We did increase the predicted sales tax rate of growth. We were very, I think we were very, very conservative, and then based on some numbers we've had since then, we changed that from 5% over the actual in 1819, 5% over 1819, into 9% now. So we increased that by about 58,000. Occupancy tax, similarly, we were very conservative, 5.5%. Changed that to 8.5. We did increase prediction of building permit revenue. Joe has advised that we're seeing very strong permit revenue still, and based on the fact that you can't get a contractor to do anything now, really through the end of the summer and into the fall, we expect that our permit revenue will remain strong. So we've increased that. In the prior budget, in the revenue, we did not have the, the surplus of the radios included in the surplus property line, so we've included that, and that resulted in an adjustment there of about $17,000. So $483,000 net increase in revenue projection. Then we went on the other side of the budget as well, and I'm not going to read each one of these lines. What we did is we changed the hiring dates. So one, one police officer will hire on July 1, one police officer we plan to hire in November 1. That saves money, obviously, in this current fiscal year. Future fiscal years, you have the full load. That's reflected in the, in the five-year forecast. One of the drivers for, interestingly, for police, we could hire two in July, one of them would need to ride a horse. We can't buy cars for them. There's no, I think if, if the chief were to order the cars in July, we can get them in November. So we're going to hire one in November. We have a spare vehicle, a pickup truck. Now that the chief will be able to drive and assign his vehicle to the officer we'll hire in, in July. The planner, we're going to kind of lag the hiring of that into September 1. Again, just to save a little bit of money there. The big one was, we removed the, the $450,000 for the design of the public safety facility. Step one there is really to get a lease. And until we can get a lease, we know what the land is going to be, there's no sense in trying to fund any or do any design work until we have a lease that's acceptable to this, this council. Hopefully, it's going to be a fairly long-term lease, at least to match the effective life of the asset. And then just some, some additional changes that we've made. There was, should get down to the bottom of this list. Why that really turned out light, and I really apologize for that on the screen, but there was a couple of broken formulas that results in about a $3,000 difference that I, I caught as I was going through this again. So I love Excel, but if you don't point it to the exact space, every time, you end up with small errors like that. So any, on, on the macro level, any change, any questions on the changes that we made to, on the revenue side or the expenditure side? They'll all be covered as we go through in, in some detail, too.
I think, yeah, I have a couple of questions on sales and occupancy tax, but it sounds like we're going to get a little more granular on that.
A little bit. So revenues by source, this is basically the same table you saw before. You can see by the source of the revenue, the changes that, that we're anticipating seeing. Again, this is just a summary of, of revenue. Does not show each individual revenue line that is in your, in your book. This is just a summary where we, we collapsed that down to make it a little easier to, to read and digest. The biggest change really is on ad valorem tax. Changed this to, again, a half percent growth in the tax base, and then applied a 22 cent tax rate. So what does that do? So it's, it's 2.36 cents is what we're going to anticipate increasing, doesn't change what 1 cent generates. The graph I wanted to show, just to show you how we stack up, and I'll, I'll put that up here, too, how we stack up to the others. Right now, with the current tax rates, we're the second lowest in the county. With the changes, our increase, Southern Shores anticipated increase, and NAGS had an anticipated increase, we will then be the lowest in the county. So even with us going up 2.36 cents, we'll, we'll move one position to the left and be the lowest in the county, which logically, I would expect that we would be, based on, you know, what our recurring costs are. We don't, for instance, we don't maintain streets. Other cities have streets that they have to maintain, which is an expense that comes directly out of the general fund. Dang, I'm really sorry, that, this is in your book, but this table just shows the impact to the taxpayer, which ultimately is what we care about. We don't want to, we don't want to increase taxes where it's overly burdensome on folks. So this table shows in the, in the column, the second column, really, it's the, the annual tax bill at 19.64 cents, and this is in your book, and then what the annual tax bill is at 22 cents. So if you, your assessed value, for instance, is half a million dollars, now your annual tax bill is 982, it'll go to 1,100. So it's a $118 difference annually. I do show that monthly as well, just, you know, some folks pay their, their real estate taxes as part of their mortgage into escrow. No change in MSD tax rates, so not a whole lot of news there.
I have a question here, Drew, for you. If we in fact increase the cost of beach nourishment, as the prior conversation, we can still cover that with these MSD rates up to a point?
Up to a point, yes.
But not probably to $4 million, right?
No, I can, I can assure you that we cannot hold, we can't cover additional $4 million in debt service under the current rates.
So these MSD rates kind of presume the 8 million, or is that what I'm hearing, the just, what you're saying to clarify that point?
Yes, ma'am. So staying static with the MSD rates, not, not changing them. We have enough revenue from MSD taxes and the, the 20% of the sales tax that has to go into the beach nourishment fund. We'll, we'll cover our debt service in the future, and we'll actually, the way the model's working, we'll actually start to build some beach reserve. So in the next go-round, in five years after fiscal '27, we should end up having, we won't be able to fund it all in cash, but we'll end up being able to fund some of it in cash. And I really anticipate this time next year, we'll be talking about adjusting those MSD rates. A lot of that will depend on how much more sand you want to put out there, because we'll, we need to cover the debt service. And then you all know that the math gets a little complicated, because when you change your levy, you also change your other revenue streams, your occupancy tax, your sales tax. All that will change as you change your tax levy.
Including the MSD levy, right?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Sales tax, so we did make, as I said, we made a, made an adjustment here. Again, this is just a, a real brief explanation. You have in your, in your book, a, a more thorough explanation of where the sales tax revenue comes from. And for the public that's watching, this, the entire budget document that the council has will be available on our website within the next day or two. So folks will be able to see all the information that you have and the explanations for revenue sources and such. So it is collected by the state, returned to local governments through the counties. The counties, this time, actually in April of every year, can decide, do they want to return it to the towns via the, the ad valorem or per capita method? Derrick County obviously has selected and maintained it as the, as the ad valorem method. We don't want it to change. Yes?
On page 57, if we're going into that level of, that's where you kind of talk about this, and I have to, and, you know, kind of interrupt and just say that I really appreciate the narratives that you're putting in to this, because again, you're trying to make it understandable to anybody that can read it. I think at this other side of the coin is that you can lose people in, in some of this because it is pretty complicated. And I got a little hung up on the, underneath the sales tax change where you did that four year average, and then you said that while there is cause for some optimism, it is prudent to continue to budget conservatively. And so to that end, this budget reflects a predicted 9% increase over the amount received. Is that correct? I'm having trouble following that 9%.
Yes, so it is 9%.
9% over two years ago?
Correct.
Okay. And 2% over this year, last year?
Right, and really not looking at last year as much.
I mean, what we're, what we're, what we're receiving right now, not the budget, but what we're, where our actual is, it's 2% over where we're at from this year, but a full 9% over the budget of 2019, 20.
9% over 1819 actual, so the last pre-pandemic year.
Oh, it is based off the actual?
Yes.
9% over the pre-pandemic?
1819, correct.
Okay.
And so it goes, didn't want to rely a lot on data from fiscal '20 because that was impacted the last, so Q4 fiscal '20 was impacted by the pandemic. So we wanted to go back to the last full, kind of the solid year.
Of actual.
Of actual, and then base it on that. So I, the initial, so what was the initial one I had on that? Let me just, let me ask this slide here. So initially, it had 5% in the initial draft, and I think we had some, some feedback in the last that that might have been a little conservative, and as I was, it was very conservative. 5% is extremely, I'm, I'm very satisfied at 9%, that kind of growth, especially based on what we're seeing, we're seeing this year.
I know, that's what I was going to hang up on, because it's only 2% over what we're seeing this year, and that seems still conservative to me.
I, I think it might be somewhat conservative, and I, I wish I had a crystal ball.
But we're so close to, we're getting really close to the end of the fiscal year. So we really are, and we still, and where, where we are with a couple of big beefy months about to embark, you know, have, so I mean, I'm just sort of talking in generalities, but it's not like we're in the beginning of the year. We're almost at the end of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so. Yeah, and so, you know, one of the things, you know, and you all heard the CPI information that came out, the CPI number in April was a 4.1% increase over the prior year. I believe that to be a blip, I'm hoping it's a blip, otherwise, we're looking at fairly significant inflation, which then eats into disposable income, which eats into travel and tourism. So, I think, yes, it is, this is very conservative. I would rather be wrong this way than wrong the other way.
Great. I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying, because it was 9 and 2, and so, thank you for letting me dig into that a little bit.
Sure.
It's probably good to be conservative, because generally, somebody continues to look at sales tax. They're also looking at how, and whether or not, how counties distribute it, so there's some issues out there that could come bubbling up, probably not this fiscal year, but the next one.
In the legislature, you're talking about?
Yeah. And we've been a target for a long time.
Yeah.
Well, that's across the whole state. They want to reallocate.
Yeah. Right, because they want.
They've been threatening that.
Population-driven, right?
But they also want to change how the counties can allocate it, too.
They wanted more, they wanted more per capita, because they believe that Dare County is getting too much sales tax, even though this is where people are spending their money.
Ash Cow.
Any other questions on sales tax?
Well, just as a reminder, that sales tax is paid on both purchases and also on lodging. So, it's like, when you get occupancy tax, you're also getting all that sales tax on that occupancy, so it ends up being quite a, quite a heavy lift for the people that are buying vacation, paying, having vacation rentals, 12 and 3/4%. So.
Fair point.
It's a lot of money.
All right. Sales tax, land transfer tax. So, I have, I've updated the graph since the first graph that we put out, the two blue bars in March and April. I, I'm not a real estate expert. I don't know how long we can sustain this level of real estate activity. It's, it really is all dependent on how much is on the market, I guess, and that's, there's not, there's not a, there's not a ton out there, I know that.
It's tight.
And, so, again, trying to be a little bit conservative. Yeah. Then occupancy. Eight and a half percent over 19, 20. Maybe that wasn't, I'm going to go back and look at that sales tax and be sure I base that on 18, 19, and not 19, 20. I'll verify that for you.
Okay.
Because these are based on 19, 20.
Yeah, and I did see, it was, looked like a little bit different formula.
I think I might have done that very intentionally, but I want to be sure that I didn't do a typo there, too.
Yeah, and that's, these are big revenue sources, so they're good to look at, yeah.
And occupancy tax, we did, it had 5 and 1/2% in the initial draft, and went up to 8 and 1/2 here. I think probably still conservative. Again, just, unless I get guidance from the council to be, not be quite as conservative in the estimate of revenue, then.
And you did mention on the top of page 61, that you thought Dare County is predicting this revenue to decline 9.8% for fiscal 20, '22, and I didn't understand that.
There was, the first information I had showed a decline in that.
Yeah.
I have not seen the new numbers from Mr. Clausen yet.
I would call Clausen. And I don't know, this is, since this narrative is new for me, and again, I appreciate the detail, I want to make sure it's accurate, because I feel like when we're adopting the budget, then we're also adopting all this narrative, and so, I'm just really scrutinizing the narrative myself.
Sure.
Okay. And that's a good way to go, I mean, so we don't, yeah.
I guess, technically, you're adopting the pages, the two pages of the ordinance.
The ordinance, right.
Yeah, absolutely, what goes with it.
But there's a lot of beef in here, you know, which is helpful, but it's got to be, it's got to be accurate. It's got to tell the tale that, you know, so that'll be a good number to double-check.
That's based on the, what I got in Mark, was the last number I got. And then, the grant revenue, we didn't make any changes to this, if they had any questions there. We didn't change beer and wine. Interestingly enough, that's staying pretty just static, you know, really no, no need to increase that, no need to decrease it, but we've not seen any, and it's such a small revenue amount, anyway. Then utility franchise tax, again, just looking at about a 1% increase. That, portions of that are going up. Again, the portion of that charged to electric, we're seeing more revenue there, but you see less revenue when it comes to the telecommunications side. And I mentioned, talked about the building permits, you know, we're seeing a lot more activity, so we're comfortable with a little bit of an increase there. And again, mentioning that that is restricted revenue, has to pay for building inspection Small increase in ABC. And we've got the gain on the sale of vehicles and other surplus assets, so we've got the vehicles, about 10,000 each. The radios, interestingly enough, we're guestimating about 12,000 for that whole batch. The chief did, did some research into that, there are so many out there, so it's supply and demand. But obviously, when we go to the market with those, we'll try to get the best price we can for those. And then, just some $5,000 for some other additional surplus property that we'll bring to you for disposal.
I really like the way you split out the merchandise revenue source and expenditure. That really makes sense, because that was always not, an unknown.
Right, yes. Credit Christian for that idea, actually. And then, this, the transfers, obviously, that's just the, all the MSD revenue, and the 20% of the sales tax revenue goes into your beach nourishment fund, and then this is the revenue, so this is taking the money back out in order to pay for debt service and other legitimate expenditures related to beach nourishment. And debt proceeds, we have to borrow money to buy cars, so we have to, have to recognize the revenue that comes from the loans. And again, we do not plan to appropriate any fund balance in fiscal '22, so we're not going to dip into the savings account for any reason. And we're trying to build that up to that, that 75% target that you all have established. This, this is, again, it's a summary of the revenue by sources, so less than half of our revenue, it's 30, let's do the math, 36% or so, comes from real estate taxes. Other places I've worked with, where I was dealing with $150 million budget, 50% was coming from real estate taxes. So, the burden that we're putting on taxpayers relatively to some other local governments is not extreme. So, I think the fact that we're getting more than half of our revenue from something other than real estate taxes, again, it's because we're in Dare County, and we benefit from the occupancy tax and the land transfer tax and sales tax. So, you know, if the legislature continues to talk, and if there are bills that get introduced and look like they're getting traction, we're going to need y'all to make phone calls to your, the people that you know in the legislature, telling them what that does to the communities, particularly, you know, Doc here in Dare County.
It'd be a game changer.
Yeah. Any, any other questions on the revenue side? So, expenditures, in this, you have this in your book, this is just by department. And then, want to talk a little bit about these, again, about expenditures by type, so you can see where the money goes. So, 26% is personnel, that's, that's a pretty common number. So, in that 25 to 35% personnel cost is very common. Again, we can't do things without people.
Amen.
Very, very few of the services we provide are completely touchless, so we need people in order to, in order to provide the service and the quality service that we expect here. Operating is about 27%. Capital investment, so reinvestment, trying to continue to improve the community, about 24%. And then, you know, debt service is about 13%. Again, not a bad number, and well within your policies. Personnel, being one of the bigger expenditures, want to spend a little bit of time here. Nothing has changed since the first time around, so we talked to you a little bit about reallocating some, some positions within the departments, so within departments. We are adding two full-time patrol officers, two full-time firefighter EMTs, and a full-time planner. And then, this budget also contemplates the conversion of our current part-time maintenance technician, facilities maintenance technician to full-time. So, we go from a current of 34 and 1/2 FTEs going to 40 FTEs. Again, just probably more information than you want, but I wanted to provide the information and kind of break down, again, the personnel expenditures. 73% of that is going directly to salaries and wages, then medical insurance is obviously the next biggest piece of that pie, and then, you know, the elders and the 401K elders, local government employees, retirement system, for those that aren't familiar with that acronym.
Drew, just a related question. When we make all those adjustments for recommendations by Becky, they're effective 7-1, but they don't change review dates, do they? This is just a one-time, you know, one-time adjustment, and they stay on the same review schedule?
Yes, so we, currently, we will stay on the work anniversary as the review date. So, yeah, we did, we built in option three from the pay-in class study, and it did, reflects all the same changes in salary, the annualized, so it's 1 and 1/2% is the max merit, 3%. So, that is all, 3% bonus, that is all built into the budget. Doesn't mean that everyone gets it. We just, again, we want a budget to be sure that the money is there.
But in terms of getting it, the catch-up part or the option three part, everybody gets that if we stop the budget regardless of the, of the performance portion of the increase, and they would get that at their anniversary date, or would you just do it at the beginning of the year?
It would happen at the beginning of the fiscal year, when the, when the pay-in class is adopted or effective, which would be July 1. Not every position, not every person moves. There are some that are properly classified and properly compensated. So, not, not everybody's salary, just because of pay-in class comes in, not everyone's going to all of a sudden get a large increase. There are some positions that do move. Some positions will not move. And then, this is just, you know, the personnel costs showing over the last several years, and then we overlaid the, thank you for your, your suggestion on overlaying the number of employees on that one, I think that helps give a little bit of reference to that frame of reference. So, personnel costs, as far as the bigger changes, the implementation of the pay-in class study, you saw the number that Becky gave you was, option three was 40 something thousand. You need to load it up. All right, so this is the loading, so that's, that's everything. So, that's, that's, you know, 401K, that's the elders, that's the effect of an increase in salary on the bonus and merit. So, that's, that's the full loading of that, so it's about $76,000. Longevity works out to be about 12, almost 13,000. It's, it's an odd number, again, because it's, I've loaded it, because we have to pay FICA on that, and we've got to pay retirement, and all that kind of stuff, so I've loaded that as well. We have, we're including in the pay-in class, a career development plan for the police department, very similar to the one that Becky is suggesting, to give a little more definition and the ability for officers to move based on their time here and level of certification, too.
This is kind of granular, but the workers' comp number that you itemized out, is that flat across all employees in the town?
It depends on what they do.
Right, so if you're, so that's an average, that 1.3 on that?
Yeah, so it's, that's, it's 1.3 of the, of the total personnel cost, 1.3% is workers' compensation.
It's the total of the pie.
Correct, yep.
Got it, got it.
So, any other questions on personnel? That's just the new organizational chart. That's really small on the screen, if you have that in the book. Any other questions on personnel before I move on to? Operations, really haven't changed anything here since the last time we spoke. Capital, the big change here was we removed the 450,000 for the design of the public safety building. Again, if we were, if, when we get a lease, that will be the first thing that we discuss with you all, and then, once we have a lease that's acceptable to us, we can come back to you and say, okay, now we need to start doing design work. We have money in, we can take money out of fund balance to do that. So, no sense budgeting for that right now.
So, any kind of building improved, maintenance is not reflected in capital, for the existing building, since we're kind of moving along in the same place? That'll just come under repairs and maintenance?
Right, so repairs and maintenance for that facility are covered in, in the fire department.
Right.
There was a 6,000, and we'll get to that, but there was a $6,000 item for the roof that was going to be in fiscal '22. We've identified $6,000 that we have in fiscal '21.
Right, that's it.
We're just going to go ahead and get those repairs done, right Deputy Chief? Yeah. I think we had some advice from the Deputy Chief, who is also, has some skills beyond the fire service, that we may need to get that done sooner rather than later.
That's great.
And then, so debt service, again, that has not changed since we last spoke. We have the four outstanding issues right now. And I think where we really want to spend the time, I guess, is on going department by department, and certainly, ready to rock and roll, so we'll start with you all. So, governing body, this is expenses strictly related to the town council, including election expense, which is, you know, quite a bit of a change over last year, that's in contracted services, and that's, that's $7,000 that we got, that number from Dare County Board of Elections.
Is travel and training only for the council?
Yes, this whole department, yeah.
So, planning board, board of adjustments, if they travel for training, or Joe's going to pay for that, okay.
Joe, we take that right out of Joe's, yeah. It's a payroll deduction. No, he would, he would, he would cover that, we would cover that out of the community development department. At least, we wouldn't do that to you, Joe. Any questions on governing body?
No, but I really do like the way you break it out. I have to commend you on, on getting specific into the departments like this in the document. I think it's very, that's very useful for people. I think it's very, that's very useful for people.
Thanks.
Oh, myself included. All people.
Well, obviously, we were very good, we reduced our budget request by 72,000.
Well, I'll take credit for that one, by putting, putting the expenses where they belong.
Right, well, exactly. We used to get a lot of flack for that. People would be like, why is the governing body spending so much money? And it was because everything was dumped into our, for workers' comp and all that.
Workers' comp and all the finance expenses that, so administration is, so this is the manager, the town clerk, deputy clerk, and the PIO and assistant are covered in admin, and half of, half of the deputy clerk, right?
Is that enough money for training the town manager?
There is, there is no training the town manager.
But the finance administrator, can you go over that current staffing? I had a little, I was, just remind me who that is, because you're...
So we don't have a finance administrator.
But you have it under current staffing on...
There is a, there is a funded and unfilled position that was the assistant to the town manager.
Okay.
So that's going to be a...
So we're leaving that there?
It's going to be a finance, HR-type person.
Okay.
That's what I was just going to ask, so if HR, I know you're, we designate, right?
Correct.
But if you, if we contracted a service or hired someone, it would be under administration?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, we have that, so that, since Ms. Flynn left, that, that position has not been taken away. It's there, it's budgeted, so it's funded.
Oh, okay.
It just has not been fit.
That's why we don't see it in the change in the personnel.
Correct.
Because it was there, we just don't, it's unfilled right now, and we're just using Osborn for that service and allocating those budget dollars to that?
Well, that's still, it's coming out, I don't know where that's coming out.
Or will it just be an unfunded, will it be an unfunded budget item for the 20, you know, for this coming year, since we don't have anybody getting that salary?
It's funded, so it is, it is funded, it's just, it's not an expenditure that we're making.
Unspent.
Correct, unspent.
So we could expect the finance consultant that we're using, is, that's funded from, that's also funded? Or is that considered the same?
It's, we're using, it basically is using that, it's a wash. Well, it's not a wash. We're spending a lot less on consulting than we are...
Right, right. Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Where, where are payroll services? Because as I'm looking at admin and finance, where do we, where do we put that contracted service for payroll?
Laura, do you know where that's coded now? It's going to be in finance, in contracted services. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head where, what department that is coded in right now.
I thought I saw a breakdown of contracted services, but I don't, I agree with you, I don't think I saw it on there.
It might be inherent someplace.
There, there was a nice breakdown, you had a contracted services, but I don't remember if I saw payroll on there.
So it will be, it'll be in, in the professional services, in finance, it will not be in administration.
Is it?
Now, and a lot of it will depend on the, the skill set when we hire the person. Ultimately, I want to bring payroll in-house. We have the capability, we have the, the software is able to do it. It's just a matter of, it's, it's a bandwidth thing, we can only ask the town clerk to do so much in terms of all that, and I think that should rightly be the job of a finance person, doing finance and HR, be able to do payroll. So, it would be paid out of professional services in finance in fiscal '22, assuming that we're still using that service at the time.
And that's itemized on page 97.
And the split with the deputy town clerk is for all the tasks other than permits?
Correct.
Essentially, yeah.
So really, the deputy town clerk can function as a full backup for the town clerk, and does a significant amount of permit work as well. Any questions on admin or finance?
No. Well, thanks for clearing that up.
Legal, Robert's here, he can defend himself. So, I expect that we're going to spend less on attorneys in fiscal '22 than we did in '21, hopefully by a whole lot. There is a, you know, slight increase in the monthly retainer, and as I, as I mentioned in the last time we talked, this is the first time that there's been an increase in the monthly retainer in years, so certainly not an unreasonable ask. And again, we don't anticipate using attorneys as much.
Well worth it. Thank you, Robert, for your service.
Thank you.
So, public facilities, we used to call it public buildings, we're calling it public facilities. Again, I talked about it the last time, we were moving some expenditures into this department that were elsewhere, trying to capture the maintenance of all of our facilities, so it's buildings and grounds in one place. This does pick up a full-time employee, right now it's a half, halftime, and it's in the inspections, moving full-time into public facilities. So this is where the maintenance contracts are for the grounds maintenance, and everything really except for the street-related landscaping. So the landscape on, on Duck Trail and in the village here, the sidewalks, that still is going to be in streets. So we still have some expenditures related to streets. Everything else, boardwalk is a public facility, these grounds are a public facility.
What's the plan for the new display screens, replacing these?
Going to go a little bit larger, and we're going to make them smart screens, so the presenters don't have to be smart. So there, there are some benefits to that, especially being able to connect without having as many wires, and Christian explained it to me, and can explain it a whole lot better than I can. It makes sense, these are a little bit dated. Again, trying to get a little bit, trying to get a little bit bigger, because we're trying to jam a lot of information on there. And all this stuff really looks great on my computer screen, but then when you, when you come in here...
What are we doing with the old ones? Are we going to reallocate the use of these old screens?
Yes. I don't know where they'll go, probably, the chief's nodding.
You can use one.
You can use one, not in your office, no.
I was going to say.
No, they're, they're great, so they, they will be, you know, we're not going to throw them away, they'll get, they'll get repurposed, you know, the great, be good size for training room and that kind of stuff. What's that? Or sold, yeah, if it's, if we don't have a real legitimate purpose, we'll put it on GovDeals.
Okay.
It will not be in my office. Anything else on public facilities? Information technology, this is, as you can see, mostly contracted service through And then the expenses for fiber and telephone were moved here, they were formally, a portion of that was formally charged into the fire department for, for whatever reason, but it's all put into IT. Police, again, two new patrol officers, two computer replacement, one is for the administrative assistants, so that is split with fire. Per the CIP, replacing 12 AEDs, replacing the mobile and portable radios, and then three replacement vehicles to stay on our schedule with those, and the two new vehicles associated with new positions.
Okay, in the, in the police, is that a... Screen's got to get bigger. Mike? Screen's got to get bigger. Where is their money in there for their, the 800 megahertz? Did I miss it?
Nope. So that is in capital outlay.
Okay. What was your question, Sandy?
Where are the radios?
Oh, the radios.
It's into the, it's categorized as capital outlay under...
Okay, over $5,000.
No, it's, it's actually under $5,000, so it's on page 113. It shows, that's the...
Oh, yeah.
800-megahertz radios, 151, 363. So it's about 2/3 of the way down on page 113, capital outlay under $5,000.
Oh, because they're each under $5,000, we put it there?
Yeah, that's, I'm still not thrilled with the name of that line, and that's something we may change in a future year, because it's really oxymoron, it's capital under $5,000, when our capitalization threshold is $5,000, so we'd have to figure out what, what to call that. We'll get that changed.
Does that have to do with depreciation?
Good? Fire, two new firefighter EMTs, three computer replacements, again, one of those is split with police. And this follows the CIP, and there were some changes, as you saw, that we made in fire to, as we were going through the process of getting the budget balanced, we, police, we cut some out of police, too. Deep Ackerman was able to identify some places to save, and similarly, Chief Black, we did make some changes between, you can see between requested and recommended, but still staying on pace with a turnout gear replacement, SCBA replacement, little less in hose extrication equipment, but still staying on track with, with that. Portable radios, obviously. And then, the subsidy does increase by 22,000. The travel and training is now going to be rolled into the subsidy rather than a separate line within the, the budget that you, that you normally would see. You know, supplies and materials within the fire department's allocation will increase, supplies and materials in police went down, because there's some house supplies that both departments use, that it just makes sense for one department to handle the purchasing of, and the fire department, the fire department does that. So, that's, again, not a, not a huge expense, but made sense to get that switched around. Any questions on fire?
Can I ask the same thing with the 800-megahertz? Because the, the lines blank over $5,000. They just reversed.
Capital outlay under...
So it's still capital outlay under $5,000. It's on page 117 of the book.
Under $5,000?
Yeah, again, so that's, it's because each individual unit is under $5,000, that's why it's categorized there.
No problem.
Yeah.
Do we move the 6,000 to repair the roof into this year?
Yes, sir. Yep, so we took 6,000 off of the fiscal '22 recommended, and we have identified $6,000 to do it now-ish. Yeah. The deputy chief's nodding, so we, we're getting that done now, you know, between now and the end of this fiscal year. And then you have in the book on, on page 118 was the, the breakdown of the, the allocation request from the, from the fire department, in a little, you know, credit Chief Black for giving us, and a lot more detail to put in the budget document this year, so you can really see where, where the expenditures are. Any questions, so we could, police, fire, staying in public safety, we have inspections. So this is a part-time maintenance technician, obviously moves to public facilities, not a whole, lot else to report here. Any questions you had on inspection?
What's the homeowner's recovery pass-through?
That's a great question, Joe.
I mean, it's not like I won't sleep at night, I'm just wondering what that is.
It's a statutory thing, go ahead. To give you a little more detail, I don't know that I can answer that as specifically as you would like right now. I know it comes from the, down to us from the state, and I'd be glad to give you a little email with a definition, but I don't right off the top of my head.
I just put him on the spot, sorry about that, Joe. Yeah, well, okay, we'll get you more, it is a, it's a, it's a statutory requirement that we have, something we have to charge, and then we, we pass it back to the state.
I don't need to know any more than that, so...
Okay.
Don't waste your time. Thank you.
See, now, he, knowing Joe, he's...
I know, he's going to...
Intellectually very curious, he's going to find out exactly what that is, so next year we'll be able to answer that question. So ocean rescue, the increase here is, is by contract, so $8,500, does not contemplate any change in service, so the, the coverage will be as it's been laid out in the contracts and as it's been done last year. I don't think he's changed, has he changed the numbers? I don't, you won't know. But it's, it is the same, same level of service as we've had in past years, as far as the number stands, the number of personnel, number of four-wheelers, and all that out on the Streets and highways, this one does go up quite a bit, and that is all the expenditures related to the, the brick project. So we're still holding, somewhat holding our breath for June, July, somewhere in that area, we should be hearing on the, hearing that we'll be awarded the brick grant, how that, we'll state it as a, as a positive. But a lot of that, what you see there is that, that, there is the annual repaving of a portion of Duck Trail, the stormwater management on Duck Trail. Saw and approved some retaining wall work in the past, this is the next year of that. And you saw that in the, in your capital improvement plan, in the presentations that were made at the retreat. If there were no questions on streets and highways, so sanitation is just...
Before we move on with, with this, if we, if we were to get grant money to help facilitate projects that are on the side streets, does that, like if we had paid a consultant or paid for engineering fees, would that end up coming out of this, in this?
So the... That would, that would make sense to, because it would be a street expense.
Right.
But you would, you would, what we would likely do in that instance is, we would have a budget amendment related to, you know, if there was a grant involved or something, we would make the council aware of that, and, you know, so that would be something that's not in here. What you're talking about is some...
Like stormwater...
Something not in here presently, but...
Like that stormwater management.
But something we might pursue in the future, say.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
This would be where you'd go with it, right?
Okay, right.
Or, so the, the grant that we have been awarded through...
Yeah.
For the stormwater study, and ultimately the construction of that, would that, would you anticipate streets or environmental protection?
That one, we put under environmental protection.
Okay, that, because that's what I was thinking, right.
The one related to the flooding.
Flooding.
And that's why.
Yes.
We're looking at the issue.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
It's, it's, it's really hard to have a, it's hard to have a streets apartment when we don't have streets. Really, the only thing we do related to streets is we do some storm water work, and then we do along 12. We have sidewalks that are, paths and stuff that belong to us, but they're on someone else's street. They're maintaining the street, and we're maintaining the right-of-way.
And that, that is definitely, you know, warrants, I think, its own department, because we don't have our own streets, but we do, um, the sidewalk is, you know, so fundamental to the town. And on that note, when we've done some, really been able to do a lot of ongoing maintenance, which I think is reflected well on, you know, page 124, I think earlier in the document, it, it's not as clear. But the, um, the, I guess my concern is when we get, when we pass this budget, you know, will we get right-of-way, starting on trying to bid out some more repair? Or who's, is it gonna be sort of Sandy that determines what's next? I mean, we've, we've had some things, we've had to table last year when we didn't allocate the money, so I'm assuming those are gonna be the first things on the list. And then do we just go out for bid right-of-way and get going on that?
Yeah, and we, we covered that in the, um, the CIP presentation, and it, it does outline the area where that money is intended to go in there on page 124. But it does pick up where, if you recall, toward the, the end of the construction project in the fall, we had brought forward to the council some different options as far as, because the, the council had allocated $200,000 last year, doubled that budget. But there were opportunities to, you know, add a little more and finish out that whole section on the northern part. The council opted not to, but that's what this would do, is finish off that section adjoining the, the last piece, if you will, of, in adjoining the Sanderling neighborhood. So it will provide that connection from where we left off, south and north of there.
And do they just get the go...
And that's about $110,000 was the estimate.
Okay, and thank you. And that, so that gets going right at the, at the budget, after the budget's approved? We, we just go out to bid on something like that?
We, we put, we start putting together the bid package late summer, construction on that. See, we don't, we don't want that going on in the summer.
No, right.
So, we, we, we schedule it for, so that the construction will take place in that. It depends on what we're doing, I guess, with Jazz, we usually wait till after Jazz Festival and then kick, kick in at that point.
Right. I guess my point about the bidding was just because of increased costs, and just wonder how far that hundred is gonna go this year?
Yeah, well, I guess we'll find out, but we'll see on that.
What about the retaining wall replacement? Is that something on the order for this fall also, or in winter?
Yeah, yeah, that'll, that'll be the same, because we would have those same issues with potential stoppages of traffic, just very, on the retaining walls, much less so, because they're even further off the road. So we, we don't anticipate, you know, any lane blockage for any lengthy period of time, but as they're unloading pilings or things like that, there, there may be temporary instances where that would occur. So again, we want to move that off until the late fall, winter months.
It will impact pedestrian, the pedestrian facilities and...
Correct.
The large volume of people that are on them.
Do we have a schedule of which, where we're starting and ending on that, or not yet?
We do, yeah. And, and again, that was in the, the CIP presentation, but there's a couple of areas along Carolina Dunes neighborhood. We have some other ones that are, are not in great shape. So what we, we did, we went through a couple of years back and actually worked, and Savannah Newburn had a, as part of her intern project, had compiled all of these, you know, things as far as the, the rating of the different walls and the condition that they were in. So we're taking two of the, the worst areas. So this, this money would replace a couple of things there. And then the one that is sort of on the northern part of the, adjoining the northern part of the core property, there's a retaining wall there that's in rough shape. And this does also include a little bit of money for removal of a, a very, very low wall that's at, adjoining Tuckahoe, and it, it would just be graded out. There's really no necessity for the wall. It, it's literally not even a foot high, so...
Are you saying we don't notice it?
You know, yeah. So, so, yeah, we do have those specific projects planned out, and as we go into next year, we already have the next set of them planned out as well, so. And anybody, if there's anybody you know has questions about that, we're glad to share that information as far as that schedule.
And it's all based on relative condition?
That's correct. And the other thing, just to mention, is that the retaining wall money isn't, this isn't the same as the trail repaving, where we're pretty much putting in money every single year. The retaining wall money, we have some, we'll call it deferred maintenance, you know, things that haven't been done for many years, but that's gonna stop. We don't, we're not gonna need to keep pumping money into that every year, okay? We'll have a few years to catch up, but that's it.
And that's, that's laid out in a little more detail, I think, in the, in the CIP.
Thank you.
Then sanitation is just, is garbage and recycling? Environmental, environmental protection formerly called beach protection. This is the professional services related to beach nourishment. It's also, you know, the primary expenditure out of this department is debt service for the 2017 project. And this is the last year of that.
Where you say, recent accomplishments, our contractor planted another 240,000 sprigs of beach grass along 17,000 feet of beachfront with the sea oats. Is that, was that in, was that this year?
Yes.
Wow. It makes our efforts on the volunteer side look a little weaker.
Well, but, but if you think about the... What, it would, we would have to pay them to do that, so it would end up, and I, I, the one thing I haven't done is I haven't put the value on that yet, and we can, we can do that. There is a lot of value to having the volunteers do it.
Oh, yeah.
Financially and otherwise.
Yeah. Oh, I completely agree. I was just surprised that 240,000 went in, you know, in addition to what we did, Sandy, I don't know.
Felt like 240,000.
97,000 sprigs, that's...
And how long did it take them? I was like...
Well, we only work one hour a week.
That's true.
It took them, it took them a long, it took them a long time. They have a lot more people, and they, you know, I tell you, 97,000 is not, it's nothing to sneeze at.
No, no, it was great. It was just great, but...
I wonder how many...
I thought, that 240 must have been over, like, when we did the nourishment or something. I didn't think that was this year, so thanks for explaining that. Yes, we were valuable.
Then community development. And this has a, a new position, planner position. Does have the, the training related to, you know, the director, the senior planner, and the new one. The one small capital expenditure for drones. We have, we have one drone, this will double our drone fleet. They do get a lot of use between, you know, what Christian does with it. And then I know Sandy's been flying recently, to try to get some more information ahead of beach re-nourishment, you know, feeding some data into that. And, you know, just wetland monitoring and flood, flood evaluation and so on. It's, it, it is a good tool to have. And recreation and special events, so this used to be called parks. The maintenance of the park, again, is in the, is in public facilities. This is just the expenditures related to the, the special events that we have. And thankfully, it looks like we'll be able to have some special events coming up.
It's gonna be good.
And then I'm just back to the summary, so that, that's revenues and expenditures. That's just the expenditures, and then, yeah, again, we are in balance. Are there any questions that we didn't cover? Because we went through all that. I know it's a lot of information.
I think, I got a little bit lost on the, on the financing page, but I, probably everybody else got it.
On the what page, Monica?
The finance, on the debt service page 79. If we're, if we're going back, if you're asking for questions. I was having trouble reconciling that number at the top, that 2, 2,003,59, 6,57. That's our debt obligation. You know, with, with the 1,777 on the bottom of the page, what am I missing there? Because I was trying to, of course, it's in the CIP and, and all the, and other spots, and you do say somewhere else in the debt section of the document. But where, where's the, what's the, what am I not reconciling on those two figures?
So there's, there's debt service, which is the 1.7, 1.8. That other number is debt load. So that's, that's, if someone said to, to us, write a check for all your outstanding debt, that's the amount we'd have to write.
Okay, so this is, so, so in other words, yes, that's what we owe.
Right.
But then the 1,77 is showing, is that because it's not breaking out all of the other debt? Or why wouldn't I see that all here?
So the 1,777 is what we owe in fiscal '22.
Just for the year?
Correct. And that, that finishes off the beach nourishment, which is the biggest one, but then there's still a little bit of outstanding debt for some cars and...
Just the annual. And you say that here, I appreciate it. I just was like, I just...
Yeah, I know it gets a little confusing when you talk about debt load and, and all that kind of stuff. That's, that also was a good number for you to have, is how much money do we owe people? In total, not annually, but in total, how much do we owe?
And also, this chart's helpful, because it does show, you know, we're getting close, you can do the math and figure out, you know, getting close to finishing off the park, the town hall refinance, and, and, you know, just sort of, it's a nice, it's a good chart, and I just, it's just annual.
Yep.
That's a good question.
Any big jump in '23 is public safety building, beach nourishment, and theme alone?
Straight-up beach nourishment.
Yeah.
Yep. That's probably, that's, that's the primary driver of that. Yep. So, the, the only thing, the only changes really we made to the, the five-year forecast model was, again, going back and looking at revenue projections, really didn't change much of anything in the future. Did change the, the assumption of 1% increase in tax base to a half a percent for both Ad-Borum and the MSDs. I'm just, again, to be a little more conservative in that. And that's, that was done in, in, you know, in the fiscal '22 budget, also carried that then forward into the, in the five-year forecast. The rest of these, I really didn't change. So none of the other assumptions changed in the model. And... How am I gonna go through and read this? I want, what I want to get to is this. So this is, this is how it looked the last time I made a presentation. So the red line is expenditures, green line is revenue. Where it's dashed is future years. So this is where we were when we were looking at gross needs, before we balanced the budget. This is where we are now. So you can see by, by balancing this year's budget out and having that, the adjustment in revenue through the tax rate, your projections are a lot closer than they were. That revenue versus expenditure, that delta has really collapsed. Which, again, this is, this is part science and part wishful thinking. I mean, things change. We factored in, you know, the CIP projects, the knowns that we have, there's no unknowns in this. Because you just can't factor those in. You can, can project forward, the personnel costs are, are pretty easy to project.
But this doesn't include the public safety building?
This does not include the design of the public safety building. I'd have to go back and look and see if the expenditure for debt service includes that. I'd have to double-check that.
Okay.
Pretty sure it does, actually. So that's, and, and this graph makes absolutely no sense unless you're looking at it on a computer screen and can, can see it a lot closer, and the same with this one. So, the what's next is, um... We need to put a notice in the paper tomorrow. Lori's got it ready to go. Assuming you are comfortable enough with what you have in front of you to publish for a public hearing, and the public hearing will be on the, at your meeting on the 2nd of June. So that's, Mr. Mayor, that's the direction we need from council, is do you want to publish this for a public hearing?
I think we need to send it to public hearing, obviously, because we need to get public input, but it sounds like beach nourishment is gonna take us to a mid-month meeting to finalize the budget. It's gonna be a huge decision with respect to spending on beach nourishment. So, but I think we do need, we do need to do the public hearing, we do need to get input. Obviously, the increased personnel and the tax rates, I'm sure, will be, you know, issues the public may want to weigh in on. So with that, I think we need a motion to take it to public hearing on the June 2nd meeting.
Still moved?
Can you state the motion, sorry?
Make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for our meeting on June 2nd to consider, consider possible adoption of the FY 2021, '22 budget as presented and amended?
I, I think we need to amend that, because I don't think, I, I'm not sure we're gonna be able to adopt, you know, consider adoption on June 2nd because of the outstanding issue with beach nourishment.
Well, that's a, I was gonna, when you asked for discussion, I was gonna bring up the point that you're bringing up for the mid-month, and now, and now, again, for reluctance perhaps to adopt the budget based on the beach nourishment information that we got from Ken today, right?
Yeah.
Because, am I wrong in saying that all of that decision, although it's important, doesn't really affect this budget?
Well, it does.
No, so it, it will affect your fiscal '23 budget, which will be the first year of debt service. So this fiscal '22 is the last of debt service for the prior beach nourishment. As Ken said today, the, the expenditures for his work are, I mean, his contract contemplates all this work he's doing now. So you could decide to spend another $3 million in sand in the project, and it won't affect your fiscal '22 budget. It will affect fiscal '23 and future, the next five years really, because of your debt service load.
But isn't the MSD revenue we're gonna collect in '21, '22 the first year for the beach re-nourishment? I think the answer is yes, we're in the...
So the, the money we collect in fiscal '22 will pay the fiscal '22 debt service?
We won't have any debt service in fiscal '22.
Yes. Yeah, so this is fiscal '22. The budget you're considering now is your fiscal '22 budget, and that has the last debt service payment.
But we already collected that money. I think the new MSD rate that we adopted last year is actually a get-ahead for the year, for the new project. So I believe that the money, we won't be spending the MSD money that we allocate this year yet.
One year ahead.
We're a year ahead.
Yeah.
Well, we can still have the public hearing with the consideration of possible adoption on that day, or we'll get input, but we also have to adopt the classification and the pay study, correct?
Correct.
In June.
Correct.
Oh, we have to do that at the same time?
Right.
Yes, because we're, what's built into this is, has financial and policy recommendations that are in here. So this is going to have to happen prior, correct? This would be adopt, considered and adopted prior to the budget?
You would adopt the, the pay, the, there's two pieces of that. You would adopt the pay, there's two pieces of that that will actually put in, will be put into the next version of this budget document that you would adopt. So when you adopt your budget ordinance and those, there's two pages that Becky mentioned. Right.
Right.
Well, let's go back to this. This year, we're collecting the fifth year of the MSD taxes.
Okay.
Next year, we will collect the first year for the re-nourishment. So it does affect the tax rates. I think we've always built...
Well, it could. It could. If you decide to go...
Well, yes, right.
Yeah, if you decide to go beyond what we can service, which, you know, you can service an additional three and change.
I mean, Ken's gonna come back with a recommendation to spend $4 million more.
You can't afford $4 million more without adjusting your MSD rates. Right.
Right. But every year, because we have a project cost, and we allocate it over time based on the debt service and everything. So we got ahead of ourselves because the project was delayed in 2016 or whatever. So we were collecting the MSD but didn't spend it. And that's why we're, we didn't have to pay the bill until this many years after the project. Last year's budget, we set an MSD rate, right?
Well, that's because of the revenue neutral, that's why. We had to make, we had to make an adjustment, but we kept it the same, basically.
But I was, but that's, we kept it the same so that we could, but I'm under the impression that we've already collected that and that the MSD rate that we set that was revenue neutral was being super conservative about the upcoming project.
That's correct.
So we are at the point of like, the same amount of funding for the project like Ken would like. I'm joking, but you know, I mean, in other words, if we had an $11 million project, we're on track to fund another $11 million project with the current MSD rate at revenue neutral.
Last year, we set the tax rate. We had the big debate with respect to the FEMA grant and the state grant with nothing being assured. So we set the revenue neutral rate to collect the same amount of money. And I believe that, it actually was going towards the first year of re-nourishment.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So in other words, we're on track to fund the same amount. I don't think that's a question for, but we could, we should definitely double check.
Yeah, but remember that amount was, was not $8 million. I mean, we're at $8 million now, could go, could go to $12 million if we adopt what, in fact, Ken's gonna bring to us.
Let's look back at what we did last year because I feel like, like you just said, we did it at the revenue neutral rate.
Yeah, we did. Remember?
Yes.
There was a, there was a push to lower the rates, and we said, we can't do that.
It's too early.
There's no guarantee.
We didn't know on FEMA.
And the FEMA was an unknown.
Right.
Yep.
So we left at the same, but that was the first year of funding for the unknown amount.
That's correct.
So you're telling me that that's not enough to fund the project at the previous level? If it's the same amount of money that we collected?
I think it'll fund at the current level.
We were financing about 6.9 million over five years, the last payment being due next year. But we're in advance on collecting the taxes. All I'm saying is, if we have to make an adjustment to that tax rate, you know, we can't make that decision until we decide what we're gonna do with beach nourishment. And I think we need to make that decision before July 1. It's gotta be into our, into our rate as we move forward.
No, because every year, we can adjust the MSD rate. So if we get all more information after we pass the budget and we find out, hey, it's gonna cost 30 million, sadly, I'm joking, you know, what do we make our MSD rate for? Then we adjust. What do we have in the bank? What do we, what do we need to get for the next four years to pay for it for this five-year period? I feel like that's when, I think it's almost premature to make that decision with Ken's presentation of today. We don't have enough information.
Well, that's why he's coming back mid-month. But you hate to set a rate, and then all of a sudden, next year, we're gonna start escalating the MSD rates. I mean, I'm not sure our taxpayers are gonna like that. You know, they like it if they're flat or go the other way, but I'm not sure they're gonna look for an escalation. We're already raising their taxes over two cents.
Or we, or the MSDs have collected enough tax revenue that we accept that our re-nourishment efforts are only going to get us...
So far.
So far, and...
And we're not going, we make that decision.
And we can't, yeah, even though we acknowledge that we're gonna be in a deficit of sorts with the effectiveness. Again, it's just a model.
I mean, I guess I would say, what's the rush? We have till July 1. We have a public hearing, we get public input. Mid-month, we're gonna find out whether or not we're going to, in fact, change beach nourishment moving forward. And if we do change it, that could change our financials moving into the new year. So, and I think today, Ken could not give us information, but I certainly hitting 4 to 5 million dollars, that was the number he was throwing out. And you don't want to delay that another year. I mean, that would escalate the taxes pretty well. All I'm saying is go to public hearing and get public input. And, but we still have an open issue with beach nourishment, I think personally.
So we wait for Ken's presentation mid-month in June and make our decision after that?
Not, are you suggesting not having the public hearing until the mid-month, June?
No, no. I'm suggesting having the mid-month.
Except for the beach nourishment.
Yeah. Getting the public hearing. There's no sense, I mean, there's no reason we can't have a public hearing and then change the budget. That's what the public hearing is for.
Right.
To get public input. So we have public input, perhaps less the beach nourishment, that we have a mid-month meeting, and we find out whether or not, in fact, we want to move forward with another 50% increase in beach nourishment, or whether, in fact, we want to go with some other plan.
I see.
And it does affect the MSD rates. I don't know, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but I think that's, I think that's the path we're following right now.
Well, I don't disagree that that's gonna have to be addressed. I mean, I just, I guess, talking it through, I don't have an objection to not passing it until after. I just think that's an awful lot to do in one night, you know, one, one mid-month meeting. But, but we'll get the public comment. I think the public probably, it's, I just, it's a little premature to be able to decide exactly what we want to spend on beach nourishment in the mid-month meeting. Don't you think? Or do you think we're gonna make that decision? What do you think? Are we gonna decide that?
I mean, first of all, what's that? I'm sorry, Rob.
I said, I don't think we're gonna be able to make that decision by the mid-month meeting. He's not gonna be done with that by then.
Well, they're working on the permitting and all that right now, so we're gonna have to make the decision. And they're gonna be going out for bid in July, August. I mean, all that information has got to be, they gotta know whether, in fact, they're doing a $12 million project or an $8 million project in duck.
Well, I guess you... I think it's, tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that what Ken is suggesting, which is so elevated above what we had anticipated, the town manager is saying, we can't, right? We can't afford a $4 million...
Unless we raise our MSDs.
Unless we raise the MSDs. Which...
That's the bottom line. We cannot afford...
We'll be able to, between now and the, and the next time you meet, and probably before that, I will send you all some information on what I think you could afford to add in debt service without changing the MSDs.
And could you also tell us what, you know, give us some scenarios on an increase in MSD, you know, just a little bit of variation there? So it doesn't look like we're gonna get to go down, but if you, what doesn't it, like, you know how an additional cent gets you $183,000? What, you know, what does that do for MSDs? Just one, you know, one point maybe, just so we can see, you know, what we're looking at? Because...
Maybe you could ask Ken to...
Because we need something to go by, you know? If we're gonna be hearing from Ken, hey, you know, this is your choice, we ought to at least know what 1%, of an MSD percentage gets you on both A and B. I think it's 450 and 173. I don't know what it is, but...
Yeah, we can model that, and then the wild card is then the percentage of the sales tax revenue that we'll just try to...
Yeah.
Put a stab on that one.
You're right. You're right. It's gonna affect, yeah.
It's gonna affect everything.
It is gonna be a...
It has a cascading...
Well, I mean, just sort of, yeah. But I...
But, you know, absent all of this, absent additional sand, you're leaving the MSD rates where they are, absent any additional debt service, just based on the project that you all have been talking about, we're actually then, we'd be building a beach reserve so the next cycle, we're not borrowing anywhere near as much money. Because we're able, we'll be able to, we'll be able to pay cash. Or at this time next year, what I was hoping to be able to do is say, here are your choices. Build a reserve, reduce your MSD rates.
Yeah.
Now, with this additional sand, that throws kind of a monkey wrench into the gears. And again, I'll try to get you what you can afford on your current. I'll let you know, yeah, if you increase, well, if you increase your MSDs by, you know, a penny in A and a penny in B, what does that do as far as what will that carry in debt service?
And let's remember, we gotta, we've gotta finance the FEMA loan of almost $3 million until that project's complete, and then you're gonna wait for reimbursement. So, you know, we've got that, that debt load to carry too, and that'll be coming out of the MSD taxes.
Does it?
Yes. Well, how else are you gonna pay it? How are you gonna pay the interest on the FEMA loan?
So the interest comes out of that, yes.
Oh, the interest.
Right.
But yeah, to care, when you say carry it, I see what you mean.
Yeah, the carrying cost.
I mean, I thought, you know, in order to substantiate it, we're actually obligating, you know, our occupancy tax or whatever the heck we've been bargaining with, but...
I think that was about $100, $150,000 or whatever that was.
I mean, once again, I'll go back to the timeline. July 1 is when we have to adopt the budget. We can go to public hearing and get public comment. I think we have an unknown issue out there on beach nourishment, and I think before we go into an adopted budget for July 1, we ought to know what, in fact, we're gonna commit to. The other thing is, as I say, they're on a timeline for going out for bid. So we don't really have a lot of time to deal with this.
Well, I think...
And I'll guarantee you that he's gonna come back with a number that's 4 to 5 million more.
He said that. He said upwards of 4.
Yeah.
North of 4.
North of 4.
We better prepare to have more than one, probably gonna have to have a special, another meeting. It's not gonna just be two meetings in June, would be my guess.
We've done it before. We've done that before.
Right. Have another budget, you know, a continuation of the mid-month or whatever if, if there's complicated problems, you know, we can't get it all squared away.
I mean, if we make a decision in, in mid-June that we're gonna, in fact, increase taxes, I don't think we need to take that unnecessarily to another public hearing, do we, Robert? And we've already had one public hearing to satisfy the budget.
Yeah, you're not required to have any more.
Right. Just one.
I think Nancy was telling me just figuring it out.
Yeah, no, not another public hearing, just additional budget-oriented meetings. Yeah, I don't think, we've done this before. We've had a public hearing. There's been a significant change.
Yes, right.
And we didn't have to have another public hearing.
Right. So, and I get, I get, I think this has been a good conversation because I think we're seeing what some of our choices are right before knowing what the numbers are. You know, it's either keep the MSD the same, which is revenue neutral, which is collecting the same amount we've been collecting. Think about changing it one way or another. What does that mean? How much does Ken want us to? I mean, so there's a, we know what some of these decisions are gonna be. We just don't have a lot of detail quite yet.
We'll model it all out. I don't think it's as big a problem as we're thinking it is because of the reserve that we have and that kind of stuff for fiscal '22. So, but we'll model it out to be sure that we're getting the ins and the outs right. Get that to y'all so you can see it. But the big unknown is, is it 3 million extra? Is it 5 million extra?
Is what?
Is it 3 million or is it 5 million extra that, you know, in sand? You know, so that, we'll model some stuff out for you and get it to you. I think we'll be okay. I think we'll be okay in fiscal '22. But I don't, I can't stand here and say, oh, absolutely, no problem. Let us model it out.
But, you know, Ken's message was pretty straightforward today. And that is, do we want to put back what we had? That's gonna cost us $8 million. Or do, in fact, we want to go and spend 11 or 12 million dollars and build something that's also gonna deteriorate probably back to the same level? Because between 0 and 25%, it's not a lot of difference. The question is, do we want to put more money into more sand to put it into the ocean? And the other thing is, what's our public gonna think? I mean, we started at 15 million, went down to 5, and now we're up to 8, and we could go to 11 or 12. I mean, I'm just saying, it's craziness. And I think this...
That's because they were doubling their erosion rate than what they thought. And it's stable down in other parts. You can argue that's because it's a big, long, linear project down there, or the fact that that area is just super volatile and really messed up. And it, more, way more than one storm is doing.
Right.
You know, it's eroding it.
Well, it's apples to oranges. I mean, we can't ever compare ourselves to the dynamics of what's happening on the beach anywhere else because we have, everybody has a completely different ocean-facing situation, right? You know, is our project, you know, losing sand because it's smaller? Probably. I mean, that seems to be the only, really easily identified factor that's, you know, making ours not be as effective is because it's, you know, it's in a smaller spot, so it doesn't have that chance to...
I would agree with you, but it's also a way different profile than any other beach.
Yeah, it is, right.
Because we built those huge dunes.
Yes.
And nobody has ever done that before. And that's because we, of what we had to do. So it's really uncharted in terms of, like, people that look at those projects and say, you did that? Wow. You know, I mean, so that's kind of different, too. It's not exactly, but yeah, it's different. And it is short. And the rest of the town would love to have some sand, too.
I know.
I'm sure you hear that. When are we getting ours?
I'll just go back to my point. I think the motion on the floor ought to be amended to be, send the proposed budget to public hearing on June 2. I think we should plan on a mid-month meeting, hopefully can finalize a budget. But I think you ought to come prepared to make a decision on what we want to do moving forward. And I think we need to make that decision in June prior to adopting our budget. I think we got a certain amount of financial risk here. You know, understand it may be financially affordable for next year, but don't forget that's a continuing obligation. And we also want to do a public safety building and a few other things. Plus, we gotta finance FEMA loans and maybe the FEMA loan for, for the brick project. So all I'm saying is fiscally, to be responsible, you know, we have to be ready to make those decisions, and I think we gotta make it in June. So Nancy, you have a motion?
Okay, so I'll amend my motion that we schedule a public hearing on budget fiscal year 2021, '22 on June 2.
Any discussion of the motion on the floor? Further discussion? Mayor Biggins will do a roll call vote. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pretend Thibodeau?
Aye.
Councilmember Mooney?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Is there any other business to come before council this evening, this afternoon?